Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call this work session for July 12, 2022, to order. If you could please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance and salute to the state flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the symbol of perfect friendship among the united cultures.
Thank you, everyone. I really hope I remember how to run a meeting since I've been out for a little bit, but it's good to be back. Next item of the agenda is going to be the approval of the work session agenda.
Second?
I have a motion by Commissioner Edwards. I have a second by Commissioner Brown. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Moving on to the next item of the agenda is going to be purpose and public input. The general purpose of Grant County work session is to inform the Grant County Board of Commissioners of the agenda items that will be addressed at the next regular meeting, and for department heads and other elected officials to communicate with the Commissioners in regard to matters in their respective departments. In accordance with Grant County's Open Meeting Act Resolution, we welcome input. This is not a question and answer period. Speakers will be limited to five minutes. Any individual would like to discuss an item in more depth may request to be placed on a future agenda. Request forms are available with the County Manager's Office. Do we have anyone for public speaking? Yes, sir. Could you please come up? Yes, sir.
This is my first time, so...
And if you could state your name and for the record?
Yes, I will, yeah. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, perfect.
Yeah, first of all, I'd like to say thank you to the Commissioners for allowing this and for Commissioner Billings, especially because he has been most supportive of me. My name's Paul McMaster. I live on Big Bend, almost at the intersection of Cottonwood and Big Bend. And what I would like to say is since moving to Grant County five years ago, we have experienced over five burglaries, break-ins. In one case, or possibly two cases, the occupant was at home, and she was a widowed elderly lady, and naturally she was a bit afraid. In another case, the people broke into this lady's house on Cottonwood. She has become so scared, they got into her bedroom, intimate apparel and so forth, that she has decided to sell her home and leave, at least leave that location anyway. It seems to me, anyway, that we have become traumatized and inundated with trash and meth houses on Cottonwood, Whispering Hills, and so forth, with no apparent solution. Would you like to live next to a meth house? Most people would not. I personally would not. An example is a house within a quarter of a mile and even less to a state police officer, and I've talked to him several times, and I won't mention his name because I'm his money source, but he's concerned that he cannot do anything as a state police officer. The same has been true. I've talked to the deputies, county sheriff, and apparently there is no remedy for trash house. Now, the occupancy thing with the, what do you call the people that, you know, temporarily move into somebody's house?
Squatter.
Squatter.
What is that called?
Little squatter.
Yeah, squatters. There doesn't seem to be any remedy for that either, and that has become quite worsening. I would like to see the Commission take a much stronger stance, a stronger stance, and create laws or new codes for the new incoming code enforcement officer, so that you can either remove these people or clean up the trash or do something. I live on a dead-end road. I go out and I clean the road. I try to do my part, is what I'm trying to say. That's the way I was raised, and I would like to see other people do the same. The code enforcement officer must have support. The previous officer that I talked to several times said he really didn't have the tools to enforce anything, and he couldn't go on their property, he could stand out on the road, take pictures, that sort of thing, but it didn't really do much good. And I would like to conclude with this, if you don't mind. I attribute this to Edmund Burke. The only thing necessary for the triumph of evil is for a few good people to do nothing. Thank you very much. And if I could approach, I have the letters here that have been signed by other individuals. I have a copy for each of you, if that's okay.
Yes, sir, and thank you.
Oh, you will? Okay.
Where exactly is Cottonwood Road?
Indian Hills.
That's city though, isn't it?
No, that's ours. Do we have anyone else for public speaking? Mr. Turieta?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, Board Members, and audience. If you would, my name is Raul Turieta. I'm actually the county assessor here in Grant County, and I would just like to let everybody know, and also we're going to publicize this, that the assessor's office will be closed on July 18th through the 22nd. Due to training, all my employees are taking a course through the International Association of Assessing Officers. It's a week course. They push a whole semester of class within one week and take a four-hour exam. It's a very intense course, and so we'll be closed. However, our incoming assessor, Mr. Trujillo, and myself, we will be taking calls, emails, and addressing the public. But I just would like everybody to know that the assessor's office will be closed from the 18th through the 22nd. So, any phone calls will be addressed or any emails, so I just thought I'd let everybody know. But the rest of the office will be closed in the assessor's office. We will take calls.
Got it. Thank you, Mr. Turieta. Do you have anyone else for public speaking? Mr. Griffin?
Good morning, Commissioners. I am Glenn Griffin, a resident of Commission District Four, and I'm sorry, I was looking at the agenda and it was further down for public input, so my apologies. Commissioners, following the local, statewide, to national coverage and lots of letters of concern, you now know a lot of taxpayers are with you on not renewing the Wildlife Services contract. Wildlife Services wants our tax dollars, will most likely ask for full pay retroactively back to July 1, 2022. The contract's money that comes from the Taylor Grazing Act and the AUM Animal Unit Month grazing fees on federal land has been coming up short of the 30% or $25,000, so that Grant County has been paying some $5,000 a year into the ranchers' match portion for four or five years. This needs to stop. You have received numerous well-researched and thoughtful letters against renewing this corrupted contract, and I know Commissioners have also received phone calls saying that some will break the law to continue the killing of our wildlife without the legal and professional Wildlife Service killers. Rogue hunters, ranchers, and underground coyote-killing contest shooters will take up the killing for the ranchers with threatened out-of-control killing of our wildlife. Commissioners' threats of illegal killing should not sway you into renewing the Wildlife Services contract. If you must renew this contract, put in penalties such as $1,000 diverted from the contract each and every time an illegal M-44 is used. Under the last quarterly report, that would add up to $27,000. That money would go to non-lethal equipment fund for ranchers to collaborate on non-lethal removal and relocation, such as fencing, flagry, guard animals, and non-lethal capture-and-release cages for wildlife relocation. Withhold $10,000 from the contract to encourage the agent to investigate and report on illegal coyote-killing contests and violations of Roxy's Law to the New Mexico Game and Fish Department, so that the rogue hunters and trappers will be prosecuted. I do not support keeping this contract, but with teeth in the contract, there will finally be enforcement of contract violations. Take our taxpayers' $57,000 and our additional $5,000 subsidizing the ranchers' 30% match, and use the $62,000 every year on our rural roads. This use is allowed under the Taylor Grazing Act. Put in larger 500-year floodproof culverts on our back roads. Climate change and continued grazing are causing increasing desertification of our publicly-owned grasslands. A powerful one-two punch that will require enlarged culverts for public safety. Please do not renew the Wildlife Services contract, and I thank you for your time and your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else for public speaking? Seeing none, moving on to the next item of the agenda. Next item of the agenda is going to be presentation, 30-year retirement recognition for Ted Martinez. Mr. Villa?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. So, as Mr. Martinez comes to his final days on June 24, 2022, I thought it was important that we recognize those employees who have put so many years in service in Grant County. And I'll turn it over to, Mr. Martinez worked in the assessor's office for quite a bit, half of those years, of those 30 years, and then moved over to Solid Waste, but I'll let the assessor take over from here.
Mr. Chairman, Board Members, thank you, Mr. Villa. Really appreciate the floor, and I would just like to say a few words about Mr. Martinez. You know, I have known Ted since junior high, high school, and matter of fact, he's spent 15 years in the Daily Press, and I'm going to use a couple terms, Ted, if you would, please, and it's called Dan and the Stuff It's. Dan and the Stuff It's. Dan Walz, the Lewis Brothers, Richard Miranda, you guys all hung out. I did take a few newspapers myself on the side, but I don't want to go down that road. But I spoke with friends around the state about Ted Martinez and his retirement. Ted and the guys, we all played ball, we traveled, we had a wonderful time playing basketball all over the state of New Mexico. Danny Walz learned something on how to block the left-handed shot, but there's rumors out there that Raul and Ted played one-and-one, and I'm just going to leave it at that on who won that game, so I don't want to go down that road. Ted has an enormous heart. I've known him since elementary. He has an enormous heart, not one mean bone in his body, but on the court, he was another Kurt Rambis. I hired Ted from the Daily Press to the assessor's office. Randy Villa was the chief deputy, and we did a lot of training, we enjoyed his company. He was always on time. I called him the stealth worker. He never missed work. He was always stressed out about missing work. He did phenomenal, he did well. An opportunity came up to work for the Solid Waste, and at that time, it was in the treasurer's office. He carried his knowledge there in the treasurer's office. Being a New Mexico certified appraiser, the position that he took was the Solid Waste, but he still continued to do field visits, helping out on delinquent tax, manufactured homes, and recuperated a lot of these tax dollars. I'm so happy that I am part of his life. It gives me great pleasure not only to be a coworker, a manager, but most of all, a friend. This is what a true friend is all about, a professional. When you get that phone call out of the blue on a certain day that something happened in your life, and he says, "Yes, Walt, I'm thinking about you, and are you okay?" That means everything. I appreciate you being my friend and my coworker and the professional that you are. Happy retirement, and thank you for everything you've done, Ted, and I hope you have beautiful, I know you're not going to play basketball anymore, but I hope you have a beautiful retirement. So, thank you very much, and I just want to thank the Office of the Assessors with all the employees. We had a wonderful time on your retirement, so please enjoy yourself, and thank you once again for everything that you've done, Ted. Thank you.
And with that, I'd like to present to Mr. Ted R. Martinez in recognition of 30 years of faithful service to the citizens of Grant County, 5492 to 62422.
I just wanted to express my gratitude for being able to have served Grant County and to provide for my family. I've worked with the amazing coworkers, made a lot of friends, both coworkers and the customers. 30 years, a long time ago, but I remember the first day like if it was yesterday. And again, I want to thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. Thank you, Raul, thank you, Randy, everybody, thank you. All right.
Congratulations.
Just want to give a shout-out to Renee. So Renee was, our HR was responsible for that plaque, so thank her, appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Martinez, thank you for your service, appreciate it. I think that, I don't think I'm the only one that thinks this, as you led, 30 years exemplary work, always seeing you in your office, busy, attending to people, and I really appreciate what you've done for Grant County. Thank you. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is going to be county reports. Mr. Andesola Detention Center.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. We currently have three new officers in training, and five officers who have completed classroom training are now on OJT. We have offered a position to an applicant which started yesterday on Monday, and as of yesterday, we're fully staffed. We've worked really hard to get fully staffed, and now we just got to work hard on the retention aspect of that to keep our staff there. Our RISE budget has been approved, and now we'll move forward with applying for Just for Health program for that care coordinator position. We'll do a job description and then post the job opening. On June 30, 2022, our population was 94 detainees with an average daily population for May of '96. This morning, our population is 96 detainees. As of Friday, July 8, 2022, we had one positive staff member with COVID. As of today, we are all cleared from COVID in the facility. Our RISE program for June 22 had 27 RISE participants with 15 in the facility and 12 receiving services within the community. For future projects, we're going to review some quotes on a body scanner for the facility. We're going to enter into a partnership with Drug Court to conduct Narcan training for magistrate courts throughout the county. We're going to meet with the IT department and develop a long-term plan for IT for the detention facility, and once we do that, we're going to meet with maintenance also for a maintenance long-term plan for the facility, and also we're developing a five-year plan for the facility. We did meet with Silver City Fire and EMS and the emergency manager, and now we're going to work on emergency procedures for the detention facility, do walkthroughs, tabletops, and drills. That goes along with our updating of our policies and procedures, thanks to that assessment. The company CSG did give us some sample policies, which we are updating as we speak, and that in tune goes along with the accreditation process, which this year, 2022, we're working on updating our policies and getting that proof of practice. For accreditation, you need at least a year of proof of practice, so that's what we're working on in 2022. Play Corr for New Mexico Counties will do another assessment towards the later part of the year, and then we'll look at applying for accreditation within the beginning of next year of 2023. Current dates, we're going to continue training for all detention staff with PSPG through our RISE grant and our AOC grant. We've already completed a section of training for all our officers on the psychological survival of corrections, and we're going to want them to do all training on the CIT, working with the Sheriff's Department. And all we do is request support from the County Manager, maintenance, and finance for purchase of equipment and grant opportunities for the facility.
Is that it?
Yes, any questions?
Let me ask one real quick, Commissioner Salas. Looking here at your population, 94 detainees, off the top of my head, I cannot remember what that facility was built to house.
It's built to house approximately 95. I do know when we get up in the 90s, it gets kind of uncomfortable. Last week, for several days, we were up to 102, 105. We do have a lot, now that we went back in-person courts, though, we have a lot, the court process is going a lot faster, they are sending people to rehab. One thing that does uptake our population is our RISE program, because probation, parole, and district courts are using that as an alternative to incarceration in the prisons. So, our numbers have risen because of the RISE program, but the RISE program is developing to something that really helps the inmates stay out in the community and stop reoffending. We do have stats that we're producing, we have quarterly reports and a hearing report showing that there is at least two or three inmates that have gone to college, started their own business, and have not recidivated in the last year or so. So as we look to expand the program, our population will get a little bit higher, but with in-person courts returning, we'll start sending people to rehab, probation, parole, and prison. I know yesterday at our courts, we had at least four or five get sent to prison, we had four or five get released, so as soon as we get those court orders, we'll release them. I do note that we do have a high number of people with our long-term, with our capital crimes. Right now, we have up to six pending murder charges. We do have that jury trial for that individual that we do have housed at the Department of Corrections. He should be in our facility later this week, and we do have a jury trial for five days next week, so he should come off our books here pretty quickly.
Thank you. And my other question, I guess, that you sort of brought up here, is I would love for our Commissioners to have the stats on the RISE program of how many have gone out and not returned, and how many have gone out and returned through this, you know, because of, you know, the program, because of this program's, well-designed program to keep them out, and like you said, I would love for our Commissioners to get a report on that, Mr. Villa, to see who's gone out and stayed out in the community and received a lot of these services and who hasn't. So if you can get a report to that for our Commissioners. The other question I have here is IT department, long-term plan for IT detention facility, you know, that's, what are you looking at doing?
We're looking at setting up a plan to redo our computer systems. As you know, computers nowadays have a certain length of time to last. Also, in our network capabilities, our cameras, the different network solutions, our internet, our phones. I know lately here, we've had some problems with our internet and phones, which Adam is working hard on resolving, and maybe if we can't resolve it, looking at another vendor. Just developing a plan for our computers, our radios, because we do, I have a lot of computers, not only for officers, for contractors, for our medical, and instead of just waiting till we need 12, 20 computers, just rotate them, buy a couple of computers every year, and then every five or six years, you refurbish your whole stock of computers, and just get in with IT to see what kind of computers we need for the work we do, and then the networks, how do we develop them, how do we grow, and network security also.
Good. Thank you, Commissioner Andesola. Commissioner Salas, you have a question?
Yeah, so all the guards and all the personnel at the jail, they're county employees, right?
Yes.
But is there separate personnel policies for them, or do they follow the personnel policies for the, everybody else in the county, you know, sick leave, vacation, FMLA, stuff like that?
We do follow the county's policies on the county employee manual. We do have separate policies for requesting a leave, because we do have to have that staff 24/7, so we do have a separate policy, which we do follow the county policy, but we have a separate policy on how you call in, how you request leave. That way, we have adequate coverage throughout the facility for 24/7 operations.
Okay, and for like overtime, is there a policy for overtime, you know, who's going to get called, who's going to be the supervisor that day?
Yes, Commissioner, we do have, we are union there, so we do follow the union contract when it comes to overtime.
So you follow the union contract?
Yes, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you.
You're awesome.
Any other questions, Commissioners? Thank you, Mr. Andesola.
Thank you, good morning.
Thank you. Moving on to the next item of the agenda is going to be our planning director, Mr. Hernandez.
Good morning, Commissioners. For my report, for current projects, we're currently working on the Infrastructure Capital Improvement Plan. We will be preparing recommendations for you all, and we're currently conducting the public input meetings. We were awarded a colonial project for the Little Walnut Road Improvement Phase One. We are in the notice of award phase, so we're getting the readiness to proceed items off the ground. For the Baldmole Road abandonment, we're currently working with the attorneys to address some issues that we, that have come up over the last couple of weeks during this transition period of the previous director going out and myself coming in. That was kind of been on hold, so I'm looking to pick that back up and bring this to you, hopefully within the next commission meeting. The same for the North Hurley Land Exchange with Report, where we have addressed some other issues that have come up, and we're looking to approach some next steps and make a recommendation to you as well. I was approached with Commissioner Edwards and the Road Department and County Manager Villa for Stream Dynamics for county roads collaboration. Stream Dynamics, they are applying for a river stewardship grant to help, they approached the county in addressing roads and drainage near some watersheds. They would be the grant holder, and they're looking just to have collaboration with the county to use our roads as some sites for their grant, so we're currently exploring that opportunity as well. Future projects, there was an announcement from the Department of Finance Administration for a New Mexico Regional Recreation Center Quality of Life grant. This grant is to create new or expanding regional recreational facilities. This is a deadline of August 12. Part of my request for support and guidance is to see if you guys have any projects we can submit for, too, for recreational facilities for the quality of life. Just in discussions with County Manager Villa and Maintenance Superintendent, we identified the Gila Park and Community Center, as well as Baton Park, as two submittals that we would like to submit for. There are three tiers to this grant, based off of what our needs are and some preliminary cost estimates, so at some point, I would like some feedback from you all as to where you want to go with this. As of yesterday, submitted the second tranche for the American Rescue Plan funds, which is $2.6 million. That should be coming within the coming weeks. And for future projects, I have begun the review process of the job description for code enforcement officers, so that will be getting off the ground, too, for advertisement and hiring processes. Key event dates, we do have two more ICIP public meetings. One is today, July 12, from 5:00 to 6:00 in the Planning Department. The next one is tomorrow from 4:00 to 5:00 at the Mevers Roundup Lodge, and the ICIP is due August 18. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. You know, and I think this falls under this, and maybe it's more addressed to Commissioner Billings, but, and I apologize, I've pretty much been out of whack for a little while, three weeks or so. You know, I'm getting emails about Cliff Gila, Commissioner Billings, do you know what, is that some of the conversations we've had in the past, as far as their parks and so forth, that we have had, because I was a little behind on this?
Yeah, so they had the ICIP meeting, Randy ran that meeting the other day, was that Friday?
That was the seventh, so I can't remember.
Okay, the seventh, whatever day that was. And Prisola Lucero was there, and I was there. There was about, I counted forty people in the audience besides us three. As far as I know, everyone there was in favor of building a Gila Community Center, as the old one is, just become, well.
Yeah, and we've had the reports before, I just wasn't sure if something new was triggered, or is this just a conversation from the past that we've had?
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's just growing into a larger and larger group out there that's working on getting a center and doing whatever they can to do that. There's one major group that's working, and they understand that they're gonna need to come up with some of the funding that's definitely not all gonna come from capital outlay or junior monies and that kind of thing. And they're drawing up plans and discussing, they have committees. One for the park, one for the community center, and one for the facilities. They've got a tennis court and pickleball court that they're using, and they spoke. How many people spoke? Do you remember, eight or ten, twelve?
I believe I have twelve participants, and about forty, about forty people attended. They also gave me a petition for, with signatures on it, I have a hundred and eighty-six signatures in support of the facility and the parks out in the Gila area, which I'm prepared to give you once we begin our ICIP process and show you, once I conduct all of these public meetings. That's my intent, is to provide you a full report.
So that was the discussion?
Oh, okay, thank you, and thank you, Commissioner Billings, thank you, man. Yeah, I mean, something like this, it's hard not to support, you know, especially our community, so. Any other questions, Commissioners? Commissioner Edwards?
So I just wanted to make a comment, since Mr. McMaster is still in the audience. You mentioned that you were getting ready to create a, that you were in the process of creating a job description and hiring a full-time code enforcement officer. And that would, that person, once they were hired and ready to go to work, would be able to address some of Mr. McMaster's concerns. And I just wanna also say that at the last commission meeting, we did pass new ordinances to address the trash buildings, so there is help on the way.
Thank you, Commissioner Edwards. Commissioner Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Randy, you mentioned that the Quality of Life Recreation Center grants have a deadline of August twelfth. Our next regular meeting after Thursday's is August eleventh. Do you anticipate us giving you some kind of input before August eleventh, so that you can meet the August twelfth deadline?
At this point, I was, I was more hoping for just general feedback, hopefully today, if that was something that you guys would feel comfortable with at this point. Like I said, in discussions with County Manager Villa and our Maintenance Superintendent, we've kind of identified those two, those two projects, unless there's something else that you would prefer be submitted as far as that grant, which would be the Gila Community Center and the park would be one submittal, and then the second submittal would be Baton Park for it.
Commissioner Brown, just to let you know, the work session at the end of this month is gonna go into a special meeting
Okay.
because we need to approve our budget for the next fiscal year, the final budget, so I'm not sure what date that is on. If you feel comfortable putting it on the agenda to discuss this, or however you wanna do it for that meeting.
Okay, well, it doesn't sound like he needs a formal decision, he's looking for feedback, and so we don't probably need to put it on the agenda. We could include it in Commissioner comments, it sounds like. So I'm curious if you have an idea which of the tiers of funding those two projects would fit in?
So just depending on the projects identified and what we're trying to, what we're trying to accomplish with the funds if we are awarded, we do need to provide preliminary, super preliminary cost estimates, and based off of that cost estimate is gonna be the tier that we apply for. Like I said, there's three tiers, I believe, off the top of my head, there's from ten thousand to fifty thousand, and then sixty thousand to eighty thousand, and then ninety thousand up to over a million dollars. So just based off of what our rough cost estimates come in, that's what the submittal will be based off of, it'll fall into those tiers.
So you don't have a preliminary, super preliminary?
Nothing, nothing yet. We do, you know, based off of, based off of some of the public, ICIP public meetings that we got formed, the Cliff Gila Community, they were gracious enough to provide their own estimate to us, they did their own homework, and actually gave me some paperwork of what they would like to see out there with some cost estimates that they, that they've kind of ballparked themselves at this point. We're gonna collaborate with Jason to kind of nail down some of that and, you know, narrow it down a little bit to see exactly what's within our capacity.
Okay, so we'll think about it more, but for the moment, the two that you mentioned strike me as very good candidates. With the caveat that I don't think we should be submitting two that are in that top tier, we should probably submit, you know, one medium, one big, something like that. Otherwise, I like the idea. Thanks.
Oh, go ahead, Commissioner.
I don't know what's going on.
So I have a follow-up question to Mr. Brown's inquiry, and that is, do we need plan, design, and engineering for Cliff Gila?
So these, these grants are similar in nature to capital appropriation, so they will cover plan, design, construct, equip, and furnish. So depending on what we're trying to accomplish with these grants, even if it's in a preliminary stage, whether it's some engineering or design, we can, we can submit the applications for just that.
So potentially, we could do an application for plan, design, engineer, equip, and furnish for the Gila Community Center, and then one for an actual infrastructure piece of Baton Park.
Correct.
So like the pavilion, for example.
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Salas?
I've got a couple of questions, Randy. One, and to this, and right now, what I'd like to do is plant a seed. Because I've had a lot of inquiries from my constituents from the Mendiz area. They say that, you know, as we move forward with this, the Mendiz area has nothing. You know, in the Mendiz area, you know, there's not a park, there's not a swing, there's nothing. So I would really like to plant a seed with the rest of the commission here, to see if we can maybe form a cooperative, because what they do have is a roundup lodge, and that's been called a community center. If there's any way that we can do a cooperative with them for, you know, improvements to that property as part of the county, okay? Because in all honesty, you know, it's true, they don't have anything. And my next question was gonna be, how do we get an estimate for things that we do wanna do at Baton Park? So we have five hundred thousand right now, okay, so there's different things that we wanna do. And it truly would be better to have some kind of ballpark figures to know what we can do, okay? So even if, you know, in trying to get this new grant, you know, so is there a possibility of saying, you know, bathrooms, heating and cooling, or whatever would cost X, so that we know where we need to head?
Yes, that's the intent for it, you know, we're, Jason, Jason, as our facility superintendent, we do also have engineers on contract, so if there's any formal design that needs to be, that would need to be made for it, we would tap, we would tap those players in to give us some cost estimates for it. And at that point, once we have the cost estimates, then we have a better ballpark picture of what we're actually trying to submit for, for the actual application. Was that your, was that your question today?
Yes, because the money that we have right now, the five hundred thousand that's available, you know, I wanna make sure that we use it wisely and complete the project, you know? But in saying that, I wanna know that we have the ability to meet the cost of that project.
Right.
So that's what I'm asking, and if we go forward and wanna use some of this money, or I'm also thinking if there was a possibility of using the ARPA, some ARPA money for some of that, you know, so some cost estimates to go along with that. So we have more of a firm rationale to be able to say this is what we can do.
Right. At this, at this time, there's no, there's no formal cost estimate of what, that I'm aware of right now. Jason may have that information on hand, I don't know if he does at this moment, but that's something we can definitely formalize and get an actual plan for each of the, each of the facilities or the parks that we're trying to accomplish. And within that, within, once we have that plan, we can go ahead and look at the actual funding sources that we do have secured, which would be the capital appropriation for the Baton Park, and then if funded for this quality of life grant, obviously, we can expand, expand those, those services and needs at those, at those facilities.
Well, and probably this is more for Mr. Villa, if we can reach out to the Mendiz Roundup Lodge and do some research to see if there's any way we can do a cooperative with it. You know, it certainly would be wiser to, you know, use an existing structure than to have to put up our own.
I think, I think when it comes down to that, to make any kind of facility improvements, the county would actually need to own the facility. And most likely, probably the land, or if there was a different landowner, typically, if there's a separate landowner and the county still owns a facility, there is an easement that they do allow us on the property, but the county itself would actually have to own the structure.
Okay, well, just researching to what can do, adjacent land, anything, you know? Because my constituents are, they're right, there is nothing out there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Salas. I heard Commissioner Brown, I heard what you said as far as Commissioner comments. But listening to us, I think it's gonna take a little bit more, don't you think, it'd be more structured, we just put something on the agenda discussion?
Yeah.
To cover this and?
Yeah, that would be.
Is that okay?
Of course, that'd be great.
Commissioner Edwards, is that okay?
I'm great with that, yes.
Commissioner Billings?
Yes, sir.
Salas?
Yes, sir.
Can you do that for me, please, and so that we can have more of a direction of what each commissioner can voice, what, you know what I'm trying to say?
A little rusty, aren't we?
It's a little, I'm a little rusty, it's been a while.
Mr. Chairman, do you have a particular meeting in mind for the agenda item? Do you want it on the special meeting?
Just throw it, because I think Randy said he needed the input by the twelfth, something like that. If we could just put it at the last meeting of this month, so we can have that discussion.
Perfect, I'll work with Mr. Hernandez, thank you.
And what I'd also like to add on this meeting too, is just a general ICIP discussion, so that way we can get the ball rolling on that and get your feedback as to where your priorities are, so that way when it comes down to actual approving it, there's kind of been some, some overall discussion ahead of time, so that it's not provided to you at the last minute.
Sounds great to me.
When does that meeting schedule?
The, when's that last meeting there? I don't have a calendar.
July twenty-third.
Twenty-sixth.
July twenty-sixth.
Tuesday, nine o'clock.
Mind me to put it in my calendar?
I read it.
Any question, any further questions for Mr. Hernandez? Thank you, sir. Moving on to General Services, Mr. Villa and Mr. Lockit.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Have the General Services report for you today. Under current projects, airport, our annual FAA inspection yesterday through Wednesday is underway. This is required for our commercial airport service. Under maintenance, we're about ninety percent complete with the bleachers in Cliff Arena, rodeo arena. We just have to do some gravel there, working with the road department. The Cliff Gila Playground equipment is delivered, and we are currently getting ready to start concrete projects for the sidewalk and everything, the holding, retaining walls for that commercial equipment. The Gila Community Center building repairs are ongoing. Detention Center backup generator is currently under repair due to having long starts and not starting like it should be. Under the DWI program, the new client database transition is happening. They're preparing for prevention in local schools starting in August, also preparing for upcoming moral recognition training. Cory Caminos administration is fully staffed, and there's one open driver position. We're still waiting on the signage for the buses, the buses are currently available, but the vinyl is on back order currently. Briefing's key event dates, out at the airport, June fuel cells, we were at seventy-five thousand two hundred and sixty-four gallons of jet fuel, which was four hundred and ninety-six thousand four hundred and thirty dollars and thirty-three cents in gross sales. All aerial fire resources have left our airport. The DWI couple events, the seventeenth to the twenty-third is their MRT training for Daniel and Arlene, and July thirtieth, they're gonna do a Baird community event. Under future projects, airport, the runway taxiway maintenance project has been awarded to Maxwell Asphalt. The total project of construction, engineering, and administration fees was seven hundred and forty-five thousand nine hundred and forty-five dollars. The FAA Airport Improvement Fund's entitlement was three hundred thousand, and we received an additional three hundred and twelve thousand. State and local funding of sixty-one thousand two hundred left the project, eighty-one thousand seven hundred and forty-five dollars short. Then Mexico Aviation has agreed to reallocate the balance of last year's grant for apron repairs of ninety thousand one hundred and fifty-three dollars, covering the balance needed. Under maintenance, removing standby generator used at the detention center, it's a future project. We're doing some stucco on the front pillars of the courthouse, manager's office, a COVID safe remodel, also getting bids for the Quality of Life grant applications. DWI, they're working on a float and plans for the lighted parade coming in November, also working on accreditation for the misdemeanor compliance program. Under Cory Caminos, we're working with the maintenance to get the new bus stop signs installed and new bus shelters at predetermined locations. And that concludes my report, may I stand for any questions?
You know, and I think this goes more to Mr. Villa, I've had some constituents, and I've had this conversation with you as far as Cory Caminos, since it's on here. Tried to do some of that Cory Caminos up towards Fiero and Hanover, because they feel a little left out. I know there's a lot to it, but I do need to get some answers back to these people. So can you, by the end of the week, let me know what they, they can, if what can be done can't be done through the monies, through DWI? And also, it's not like an everyday thing that they want it, I mean, in every weekend, it's every now and then, people like to go and to come into town, have a few refreshments, and and they're trying to do the responsible thing, that's what's getting with me, so if we can get probably an answer on that by the end of the week?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, yes, what I'll do is, I've been working on that, we're trying to find a solution, and maybe it's, you know, it's the same people that wanna come out, so maybe look at a, you know, demand type of route for them, whenever they wanna call out, with enough time for us to get out there, we're working on that as well.
You know, the other part to this too is looking at manager's office COVID safe remodel. I know we had some money aside, off the top of my head, I don't know what's left over, but I really haven't, I don't know how the other Commissioners feel, I really have a problem with carpets in offices, anywhere, because I think they're not as sanitary as other tile floor and stuff. I'm not saying redo the whole county building, but look at some of these pieces and get us some of this cost, see how much money's left over so we can get that done. Unless the Commissioners feel a little different on that? That's all I have?
Yes, the plan, Mr. Chairman, the plan is to replace the carpets in the manager's office with the same kind of tile that's in the red room, so it's a lot easier to clean.
So if you can look at all the areas that have tile, I mean, that have carpet, because it is a little hard for, for them, I mean, unless you clean them a bit. But I don't know how the other Commissioners feel, that's just a thought off the top of my head.
Correct, and we are looking at this build, or this, this room here as well, for the commission chambers. Only problem with doing the tile is having the echo in here. The carpet does really keep the noise down from echoing in the sound system and things like that, so we would probably be putting carpet squares back into here.
Well, you guys are the experts, and I just throw these things out, you guys work on them.
But, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I think, if you look at it, I think about ninety percent of the facility is, has due floor, correct? Besides the manager's office and then in here in the commission chamber. And so we thought with the, with the tile carpets, which are easy to replace if we have to, and it just makes it better for Salas.
I know that I've had, gotten some requests from some of our clerk, and to redo the flooring in their vault too, which I believe is carpet, I look in here, there's some other places, so I don't know if you can, you guys can look at that, throw it at the Commissioners, do whatever. Lost my second theme, but that's fine. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Two things, Jason, and now that I wanna tell you about this, it's completely fallen out of my head where it is, but I noticed that one of the bus stops has been graffitied.
Okay.
So if you would check on that and get out here, have somebody get out there, paintbrush, that would be good. And then the second thing I just wanna mention is, when you do the remodel of the county manager's office, one of the things that I think is, is really important is, I've gotten some feedback about some of the changes we've made have made some people's work environments really noisy. And I've noticed that myself when I'm in the building, that it's really changed. Some of the COVID safe improvements that we've made have really changed the level of noise between offices. of noise uh between offices and, um, the public and that sort of thing. So if you would just be really conscious of that in the county manager's office, and maybe, um, talk to the employees and get some feedback about what is, um, uh, challenging to them around that, and just be conscious of that, because when we take out the carpet, and I don't disagree with the chair at all on the sanitariness of carpet, um, but, you know, then suddenly we're introducing a lot more noise into people's work areas and that sort of thing, so. Thanks.
I think, you know, I remember by the one, I know that we still have some ARPA funds, um, you know, I'd like to probably, probably sooner than later decide, and and I'm not sure who's dealing with this anymore, if it's still Mr. Hernandez, or I I I don't know, but that's up to you guys. But start having these discussions, I don't know when our next draw's gonna be, I don't know what the county staff feels like when the next draw's gonna be, but I think we probably should start having these discussions sooner than later, because I know we still have, I'm not sure, at least over two million sitting in there. And, uh, maybe, I'm not saying at the end of this month, but maybe we could start these conversations, what are we, July, August, somewhere in there, and September, and decide what we're gonna do and and have our commissioners at least have time to think about this. Thank you. Anything else, Jason, any other questions?
No.
No? Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to finance director.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My report is pretty short, simple. Um, I'm just working on the final budget to have something presented to you, um, prior to the twenty-sixth, uh, meeting. And, um, of course, we know that it's gonna be presented on the July twenty-sixth meeting for approval, so that we can make it by the thirty-first, um, due date to DFA. And, um, I'm just going to go ahead and pretty much do the same thing that we had on our final budget, just go on with that, unless if there's any, um, anything that the commissioners would like for me to look at and to include into the final budget. Other than, of course, I will review, um, what our ending expenses were by line item for each department, and then take that into consideration to see if we need to increase the line item or decrease it as necessary.
You know, um, will we have some, I know there's been quite a few changes here within the last, you know, month or two on on some stuff. Um, are we gonna have something sent to us prior to this meeting that we can review and look at?
I do wanna try to get something to you by Friday prior to the meeting date.
Okay.
So it'll be like that Excel, um, worksheet that I always give you, and then for the final, then I'll have that full, um, budget report that includes all the, um, special funds.
Thank you. Any questions, commissioners? No, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on to, uh, next report is gonna be our road department, Mr. Gualba.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is the report for the road department. Um, I'm happy to say that our chip cell for the cap NSB went pretty well, we're actually, uh, we're, we went actually ahead of schedule. I'd, on the key dates, I'd given myself two weeks to complete our chip cell and do hopefully rain, but we were able to avoid it and we were able to get done in one week. Uh, back up to our our blaming back, our our blaming are back into the routine right now, there basically the blade in troubled areas and complaints due to the rain. Um, our road crews addressing complaints as they come in, most of the complaints have been either debris on the road or, uh, cloud colwards, I'm sure that's gonna be, gonna be happening for the next few weeks as we still get rain. Uh, our future projects, we're hoping to start by the end of July and getting on our SP project, which is the curb and gutter in North Hurley and Aua Blanca, and also lifting the road and setting colwards and a little walnut. If, if not possible in July, we'll probably start in the, in August.
Mr. Gualba, is your mic on?
I think it's just.
Is it, yeah, you might get it a little closer, we're having a little trouble.
And pretty much, uh, that's about it, it's been kind of slow, uh, it it crescendo basically with the chips, so we got all that other ways, we're trying to catch up, basically, go back to where we were at, uh, uh, taking care of complaints and get caught up before we do start our next projects. Like I said, hopefully at the end of July, we'll we'll get into Aua Blanca, do the curb and gutter, if not in August, we'll still be pretty, be busy for the next few months. And that's about it, it's pretty simple this one.
You know, I appreciate it, and I know that we need the rain and we welcome the rain and we have no problem with the rain, but, you know, that always creates a little bit more problem with you with the debrees and all that, so just ask the public to be patient on some of the stuff that needed to be done, because we do need to clear those roadways, and I appreciate what you do out there for us.
Thank you.
Questions, commissioners? Commissioner Brown?
Uh, statement, I actually got a question. Thank you very much for the report, Mr. Gualba. Uh, when was that, last week? Uh, there was a meeting, it was longer ago than that, about, uh, the Borough Mountain Homestead Road, uh, that Tyrone mine needs to relocate for the MO2 project.
Yes.
And at the end of that meeting, which I thought was quite productive, uh, Mr. Brown, another Mr. Brown, who, uh, is co-owner, I believe, of the Borough Mountain Homestead, uh, pulled me aside and, uh, told me that, uh, in his view, the blade man who works that road, and I don't know who that is, uh, does the best job of anybody he's ever known, uh, blading, uh, county roads. So, uh, whoever that is, please pass along that commendation, it was it was great to hear that kind of positive feedback.
Yes, sir, I sure, I'll pass on to.
Thank you, Mr. Gualba.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Gualba. Moving on to the next county report's gonna be our IT director, Mr. Baca.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. Now regarding the IT department, what we've been working on lately, myself and our IT specialist, are site-wide implementations of multiple tools that we've purchased. The first one being our remote monitoring and management tool. This is a tool that allows us to see every desktop, every laptop, every server within the county, every machine that's on the domain, every machine that's on the network. And the intention is to be able to take an inventory of it, to understand what hardware each and every machine has, the processors, the amount of RAM, the operating systems that they have, how many security patches that've been applied to these machines, and also for us to be able to manage that, to push Windows updates to these computers and make sure that they're as secure as possible. By utilizing this tool, we'll be able to get, uh, the site into a typical rotation of computers updating, for example, let's say, two AM on Saturday, uh, going through reboots and the typical type of maintenance that a desktop and laptop and server fleet should be going through, that unfortunately, it has not been the case. So we're looking to formalize this and get our machines in in a better position as far as the security perspective goes. We've also been working on implementing a site-wide antivirus solution, and though we have one with, uh, Spectrum, remember, the intention here is to replace the tools that they put in place to allow us in the IT department to exclusively manage our computing environment. With the antivirus solution, we've been plugging away, starting with a pilot group and deploying the software to just a certain amount of computers, and the intention is to see what happens when we install the software, to see if the antivirus solution will exclude certain files, quarantine them, kill them, and the intention is basically to see how it reacts within the environment. So far, it's been very good, very stable. We have had a couple instances of software that has been quarantined, and we've gone back and performed exclusions, saying that it doesn't need to worry about that particular software. But this is just how it goes when implementing a new software and going through the fine tuning of an antivirus solution. More than likely throughout the week, we'll have, I'd say ninety-five percent of the site covered with, uh, this antivirus solution, so we'll be that much closer to, uh, gaining our own independence as far as managing our IT department. And we're also going to work on implementing a backup solution for the entire site as well, primarily for our server infrastructure. We have eleven servers grand total, so we'll be working on backing those up. And once again, this is to do so exclusively within the IT department here, and not rely upon Spectrum for backups. So we'll be working on implementing that, we received the hardware, uh, the server for that last week, so we'll we'll be working on racking that, powering it up, getting it on the network, and then configuring it. As far as, uh, future projects go, once all of these tools are in place and running as expected and designed, we'll begin on some fine tuning regarding the security of our desktop and laptop fleet. In particular, there's a tool provided by the Center for Internet Security called a CAT Pro Assessor. It's basically a tool that you can run against the current configuration of every computer that we have, and it'll bring back a report on how that measures up to security, uh, standards from the state. So we'll be able to compare that and see where we need to improve. And it's basically an ongoing annual process that we can do. Once we have the majority of the, uh, implementations in place, we'll be able to just fine tune it from there. But what this is doing is allowing us to run our desktop and laptop fleet in a manner that's in sync with security standards provided by the state. It'll get us that much closer to having a m- a secure, a more secure environment. As far as key event dates, starting in mid-June, continuing on through this month, myself and our IT specialist have been going through training and some consultation hours regarding our remote monitoring tool, as well as our antivirus solution. These are basically, uh, training sessions on teaching us what the different menus are within these new tools, how to deploy the agent to all the computers, what to do when we see anything out of the ordinary, how to push Windows updates, things along those lines. It's basically the how-to on these tools, how to use them and how to manage them successfully. Uh, was able to attend on the thirtieth of June, the New Mexico Secretary of State IT Roundtable Discussion, which was pretty good. Seems like lately the primary discussions have been all around cybersecurity and insurance that goes with that, and making sure that, uh, particular security methods are in place prior to any considerations for cybersecurity insurance. So, uh, that's pretty much what I have on my report, may I stand for any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Baca. Commissioner Salas?
Adam, when you're, uh, you know, backing up data and everything, and you're gonna put a server in, so will all the backup be in-house, or is there any plans for a separate, you know, like a cloud, saving to a cloud?
That's a great question, thank you, Commissioner Salas, and that's what we purchased, was a server that allows us to have onsite backups as well as cloud backups. And the intention is basically to have data offsite, just in case anything happens to the literal physical server room, we're able to retrieve that data.
Okay, thank you so much, Adam.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Edwards?
So, Adam, you already know that I'm not a tech person, so maybe this is a tech dumb question, but, um, so, uh, you've been working towards, um, the county being independent from outside contracts for, I think, really as long as you've been on board.
Pretty much.
Um, I appreciate the amount of work that you've done on that and and agree with your intention around that, but one of the things that occurs to me is that if, uh, you know, the county can't run without its, uh, IT. And so, um, if something happened, um, uh, you know, a major server interruption, something that was gonna really, uh, interrupt the county's capacity to run its business, uh, on its IT system, are we going to be able to handle that in-house, or what is our plan, um, if we can't handle getting that all back up in-house?
That is a good question, thank you for that, Commissioner. What we're able to do right now is utilize the backups that are happening with Spectrum. So we do utilize, uh, that IT contracted support. That's not to say that we have to exclusively go away from that in the future. I I'm actually interested in considering IT support with different groups to purchase consultation hours ahead of time in case of instances like this. But it's more so a time and materials or an as-needed basis, rather than having a group have their, um, their hands on the the network to, uh, to a large degree, more so as additional support as needed. So that's one of the things I intended to look into, although at present, we're basically needing to start with the foundation of things.
Right.
That's definitely one thing that I I will plan on having in place as well, just in case.
Well, I appreciate your forward thinking on our ID, IT department, and really appreciate the work that you and Robert are doing, so thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, commissioners? Thank you, Mr. Baca.
Thank you.
Looks like that concluded our county reports, right?
Yeah, or I can give the manager's report.
There you go.
Also, just wanna introduce again, uh, Justin Gluckovich, who's our emergency manager. Does he wanna come up and introduce yourself and say a few things? Also, um, as you know, Randy now, Hernandez is the planning county, uh, community development director, working on getting the executive assistant in, um, working with Linda on finalizing the budget and approval. Um, anyway, go ahead.
Can you guys, can you guys hear me?
Yep.
I'm Justin Gluckovich, I'm the county emergency manager, Randy said. Uh, just a brief history about me, so you guys a little bit more familiar. I started with the county back in two thousand and eleven with the Grant County Detention Center, I was there for a little over six years. I then proceeded to get the safety officer job at Fort Baird, which I held for about a year and a half, and then I was promoted to the safety manager, emergency manager for Fort Baird with the state. I was there for about five years, and now I'm back with the county, full circle, and, um, I'm happy to be back, just getting my feet going, I have my my compass going, looking to bring the emergency management part of this county back up to where it needs to be. Um, I have a lot of good mentors, a lot of people I can ask for help with the state, with other counties, through Valley PC, through Region Two, um, with with contacts I've made working with the state the past five years. So I'm really eager to get working, really eager to get people, information, schools, um, ru- rural areas like Cliff, like Nibres, um, let their voices be heard as regards with emergency management. I appreciate you guys lending a little peer's mind.
Thank you, congratulations.
For being here, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
So, um.
Congratulations, Randy.
And so, um, just moving on, with future projects, we did talk about Baton, I really do think that, yeah, we we need to have a longer discussion, I think, um, there's forty-five million dollars, I believe, in the, um, in this grant that Mr. Hernandez was talking about. Um, and so I think there's plenty to go around, um, obviously, there's always gonna be, you'll have forty-five million dollars and you'll have a hundred and forty-five million dollars of want, so it's just how we, uh, provide a narrative to get that, those grants. I think it's important in in working with both Jason and Randy, I think, uh, we got a pretty good team here and that we can, uh, be successful on on whatever the commission chooses as far as projects are concerned. Um, talking about the manager's office remodel, yes, I, we understand that, um, we're gonna look at ways to make sure that it's convenient for the public and also convenient for our staff. Um, I s- I'm still, as the fire management officer and ARF certified firefighter, I was working with, uh, Ms. Winger at the airport with, uh, with the inspection, uh, with, uh, Federal Aviation Administration, uh, that's going really well, there's some hiccups in the ARF, um, but, uh, the the vehicle's just up in age, and so we did get a grant to get a new one out there. Uh, just some key dates, end of July is the final budget, obviously, as Linda said, and then, uh, for those of you that don't know, which I'm sure you do and you've gotten, the Legislative Finance Committee will be here at Western New Mexico University from, I believe, the nineteenth through the twenty-second, or that week, um, and there'll be a lot of events up at Western. And one of the events they're gonna be having is the fire, um, going over some of the fires in New Mexico and how we can, um, uh, apply for some of those disaster grants and how we go about it, and and so, uh, Justin and I will be attending, you know, at least a portion of of that, I think it's on the first afternoon of the legislative finance year. Uh, Cory Caminos will also be assisting them and taking them, uh, for evening events and and all of that. And so unless you have any questions for me, um, that's all I have.
Thank you, any questions? Commissioner Brown?
Is now a good time to ask about, uh, fi- the flooding situation, or is there a better chance?
No, you don't, I'm, I'm, and I don't know unless Justin has anything that I don't have, we've been kind of on the same page with this. In in Grant County, we really haven't had, um.
So let me, let me just let you focus on a specific question, which is, I got a flash flood advisory yesterday, and it was for the Diamond Creek area.
Yes.
Uh, one and a half inches of rain expected, and we were warned about thirty thousand times normal flows, so that's the question, did that, did anything happen up there that we should know about?
Not that I'm aware of it, have you heard anything, I mean, it, you know, what what they're trying to do is just, because of the burn scars, keeping people aware, right, consistently of, you know, don't, don't, uh, don't put your guard down, especially those properties up there, or people even in the area, um, some of those ranchers and hikers and people that get around those diamond bars or or get in those g- gullies and in those canyons where they wanna, you know, maybe camp out or whatever, they've gotta be really careful, because the flash floods will come really quickly, and I think that's the message they're trying to send. Uh, but we haven't had any major, uh, flooding in Grant County as far as I know, I know Captain County has, um. I know Catrin County has, but as far as debris, I have not seen really that much in Grant County, unless you wanna elaborate on that.
Just, thank you for letting me come up here. Just thinking back on what Mr. Villa is stating. I've been, we've been working with the NRCS errand, and I can't off the top of my head remember the acronym right now, but they're out of Albuquerque. And what they do, they're specifically monitoring the Midnight Canyon area, the Mimbres area, for flooding due to the burn, coming back into that burn scar from the silver fire. What they're doing is they go out there, they assess soil erosion and potential washways for the low crossings. And what they found was two, possibly three areas that they might have to conduct work on, building slopes, building berms, something like that. Again, what Mr. Randy Villa said, a major part of it is in Catrin County, what they're worried about. So what this is, is they had us go over a form that says, hey, if you guys want help, we can offer help, if that's what you need. So they had an engineering team go with the Bear team. They did a tour, and like I said, they only found maybe two, three properties that could be potentially damaged from floods if they should occur.
So, and Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Brown, just to answer your question. So there hasn't been that massive flow just yet. Again, when you're looking at fires, you might go through the fire season this year with a really, really, really big burn, and you won't see that. But as you get into the next year or two, where you really starts, that it starts to settle a little bit, and you get those really heavy rains in the next year or so, then you might still see some flooding. So we're still looking at at least another year to two years down the road.
Okay. Thank you both.
And just one more thing, just for the mitigation part of this. Mr. Villa and Mr. Lucky have provided sandbags that the Forest Service did fill up with sand to help them divert water from their properties. And when I went out there to get my eyes on it, some residents from the Lake Roberts area were out there actually getting some bags and taking them out, and we have about 1,000.
I think there was somewhere around 1,500, and they're all gone.
So...
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, yeah, I'm good.
Commissioner Bill?
So I should wrap this up when Joe was here, but... So I got a call recently about the Royal John Mine Bridge. Is that county-owned, or is that state?
Oh, did Joe leave already? I think it is. It's a county maintained.
So I haven't seen it, but this is not the first call I've gotten on it. I guess the tree's growing up around it. At least two individuals have expressed to me the danger of it washing out, if in a big flood event. I'll just leave that with you.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Billings, I will work with Mr. Glihava, and also just Justin, at least take a look at it and see what the issues are, and see if we can get that. I'm taking care of it.
Okay.
Is that it, Mr. Villa?
That's it.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is gonna be review of July 14, 2022, regular meeting agenda.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Obviously, approval of the regular meeting minutes agenda. And then public hearing on ordinance 02204. And we have on the phone Luis Carrasco on the phone for any questions.
Do you have, I thought you might have had some questions on this, Commissioner?
Did he have some questions?
I don't think, I do accept that, you know, we're all watching the interest rate environment, and I guess I was looking for, wouldn't mind an update on that, even though I know these aren't being sold right away. But maybe that's supposed to come from Mr. Valenzuela and not Mr. Carrasco.
And Luis, are you on the line?
Yes, I'm on the line. I thought that Mr. Valenzuela might be present as well, who might have some better information than I on interest rate and market information. Is that correct?
He was going to be. He's currently not in our audience, so he had planned to be, but...
And my question is really just curiosity. It's not crucial.
Well, I can, and I did have a few changes from, you'll recall that this was before you had the last meeting, and because there were only three commissioners present, that created some complications with adoption of the ordinance at that time. Since then, I have had an opportunity to visit with Mr. Valenzuela and discuss with him a proposed sale, a potential sale that he was going to discuss with you. And so we did amend the ordinance slightly to better tailor it to this type of transaction to allow for it to move forward. So if the board would like, I can quickly go over those, take a couple of minutes, and just briefly, after speaking with Mr. Valenzuela, I do understand that there is a negotiated sale that may be possible here, even in the current market and with current interest rates that the board may be interested in. So that's a positive development, and I don't think there have been any significant decreases in interest rates, and we're still in the same market largely as we were last time. But he does see a path forward to actually refunding the 2014 bond. And so we revised the ordinance, as I said, to accommodate that. If it's okay, I'll just go over those changes with you very quickly.
Yeah, go ahead, please.
Okay. So we've determined that negotiated sale would be the path forward, rather than a public sale, but you'll see changes in the ordinance that authorize a negotiated sale as opposed to a public sale. We also eliminated the need for approval of a form of an escrow agreement. Mr. Valenzuela tells me that as he envisioned the transaction, the bonds would be refunded immediately, so we wouldn't have any need to put the new money in an escrow account to pay the old bond off in the future. So that will happen all at the same time, on the same day, so there's no longer a need for an escrow agreement. I also corrected the outstanding amount of the 2014 bond, since there was a principal payment made on July 1st, bringing down that outstanding amount by a couple hundred thousand dollars, I think it was. It establishes the redemption fund, that's the fund where the money will go in once we issue the new bond to pay off the old bond, rather than an escrow agreement. And then the old ordinance authorized the chair of the board and the county clerk to authorize the bond, to sign the bond and other documents related to the bond. I added the vice chair and the deputy county clerk. In the unlikely event that the chair or the county clerk were not available to do this when the transaction was closing, that's fairly standard. I revised the date to reflect the adoption of the ordinance from June 14th to today's date. And then significantly, although we don't have the details of the bond, and I think Mr. Valenzuela told me that there may not be a need for preliminary official statement or official statement, we did provide some flexibility in the document so that if the transaction does require disclosure documents in association with the transaction and a continuing disclosure undertaking, that those would be, the forms of those documents would be approved by the commission at a future meeting, either through an ordinance or a resolution. That's an important step in many types of transactions. So we did allow for some flexibility there. And then on the parameters, after discussing Mr. Valenzuela, the type of transactions he's contemplating, upon his advice, I changed the parameter for the original discount from zero to 5%. I changed the bond, as I mentioned, the bond will be sold through a negotiated sale, not a public sale. He asked me to increase the parameter on the underwriting discount from 1% to 2%. And then I made some other cleanups for typos and other minor things that came up in my second review of the document. And that's pretty much it. I think this ordinance will allow us to move forward with the transaction Mr. Valenzuela was describing to me. And with your approval, we can begin to move forward with that. I'm happy to answer any questions, also.
Thank you. Any other questions, Commissioner?
Mr. Chair, I do. Luis, as our bond counsel, how do you feel about the 2% underwriting fee?
That is fairly standard for a lot of the transactions I've seen as a parameter. In the actual final terms, once the bonds are issued, we've seen it be much lower than that. So the parameter allows it to go up that much, but I don't actually think you'll see anything even near that. In my recollection, I think all of the underwriting discounts I've seen in the last year have been well under 1%. So I think Mr. Valenzuela was thinking there was he just wanted to have the cushion to move forward in case things really changed, but didn't really see it actually approaching the 2%.
Okay. Seems odd if all the recent transactions have been under 1%, that we would even contemplate more than that. I guess we'll just hope that ours ends up being similar to the others. Linda, you don't have any problem with the 2%?
As a respect, if they do, and in addition, as we discussed last time, you're naming the county manager as your delegated representative to set the final terms. So if we went to pricing on that, and the county manager was not comfortable with the amount that was being set to the underwriting discount, he does have the authority to set that amount, and if he's not comfortable with that, just, you know, cancel the sale and put them out for another type of sale or negotiation.
Okay. And as I recall, DFA does not allow us to move forward with refinancing like this if we're not gonna have a, I think it was a 3% savings threshold. That fee is included in that calculation? It's a net 3%?
Correct. So yes, you'll see a reference in the ordinance also that all of this is subject to the approval of the Department of Finance, which is the condition precedent for going forward with the transaction. And as you've mentioned, the Department of Finance Administration won't approve it unless the transaction would experience a result in a 3% savings, a net present value savings. My discussions with Mr. Valenzuela last week indicated that that was, in the transaction he was contemplating and was going to present to you, that it was going to be able to meet those 3% net present value savings. So you're correct that that all needs to happen and fall in place in order to issue those bonds. But I think he sees a path forward, which is surprising to me, but welcome news. And if he can actually get that savings lined up at 3%, then I don't see any problem getting with the Department of Finance Administration's approval on that.
Okay. Yeah, I agree with your surprise, and I'm pleasantly surprised. So that's great. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Edwards?
So we could, in essence, based on what the conversation that you've just had, we could in essence say to Randy, we want you to be uncomfortable at 1%.
Yeah.
Or something like that, even though 2% is... So alarm would happen at 1%.
And I would think that the, that alarm would basically trigger a discussion with Mark and maybe Luis about whether this is necessary to see those savings. I wouldn't wanna throw out those savings.
Right.
Based on this, but I also don't wanna share those savings with an underwriter necessarily.
Yes, Chairman, Commissioners, if I may, I can certainly appreciate your concern on that. The county manager could, as I said, exercise the authority you're delegating to him. However, if the commission was not comfortable with the 2% underwriting discount, you could certainly amend the ordinance to go back to the 1%, and that would be the maximum parameter. So I just bring that up because it is in your discretion. It is what you're delegating to the county manager. So if you felt frumpy about that, I have no problem changing it to the 1%. But, you know, this is coming up on the advice of your financial advisor, and he's the expert on that. So I defer to him, but it's your decision.
Could we have him on the call on Thursday when we're talking about this, so we can ask him about this? Mark?
Members of the board, Commissioner and Chairman, we have a meeting with Mr. Valenzuela after this commission meeting. So we'll go into further discussion about this 2% parameter to see what his thoughts and his feelings are, and why it's gone from 1 to 2%. And then I'll ask him if he can be available for the meeting on Thursday.
Let him know we need him available for the meeting. What do you, I mean, what are your thoughts on this, or do we just wait till Thursday on the 1 or 2%?
My thought is I don't want to tie the hands of the experts by saying 1% arbitrarily.
Right.
But I want him to appreciate that it's a concern, that we would be, for some reason, anticipating worse parameters than others have gotten.
That's kinda where I'm at. That's, I don't wanna tie his hands. I wanna hear from him why he's doing that under the circumstances.
No, and that makes sense, and that's, I think, pretty much what we're, what most of us need. But, yeah, if he can be available Thursday, it'd be great. And then we can probably, this probably needs further discussion before we...
Because we can just change it as in the motion on Thursday if we want to. We need to.
Thank you. Anything else? Mr. Valenzuela, anything else, or Carrasco? Sorry, I'm thinking of Mr. Valenzuela. Anything else, Mr. Carrasco?
That's all I have.
Thank you, and thank you for your time. Commissioners, anything else on this... On this ordinance?
No, sir.
No.
Thank you, Mr. Villa. Go ahead.
Okay, so obviously closing the public hearing, and then consider the ordinance 02204. Then we'll go into public input, Hill Regional's report, presentation by the sheriff, and approval of the minutes for special meeting, work session minutes, and then the regular meeting. Financial reports, Mr. Vazquez.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you have the fourth quarter financial report as part of your packet. And I will go over the major funds, which will be the ROAD, the general fund, the ROAD, and the detention center. So I will begin with the general fund. At the beginning of the fiscal year, we have $4,388,558 as a beginning cash balance. And to date, through the end of June 30th, we collected revenues of $15,578,717.59. And we had transfers going out of $4,180,362.63, with expenditures of $10,105,309.76. That left us, and with the investments of $10,802,475.60, that left us with a balance of $164,779.37. And we also met the reserve requirement of $2,526,324.44. And I'd like to point out that we actually collected 15% above of our revenue that was budgeted in the general fund, and our expenditures... When we had a total of 89% of our expenditures that was in budgeted, so we spent 89% of our budgeted expenditures in the general fund. Then I'm going to move on to the ROAD, which is the fourth one down, Fund 2004. We started that fund with a beginning cash balance of $509,332, with revenues of $12,024,933.50, with transfers in of $717,250, with expenditures of $1783,178.42, leaving us with a balance of $468,337.80, and with the reserve requirement of $148,598.20. And in the ROAD fund, we actually collected 10.56% above what was our budgeted revenue, and our expenditures were at 90% of what was budgeted for the fiscal year. And then I'll move on to the detention center, which is Fund 22600, which is the second to the last of that page, of the first page. And in the detention center, we begin with a cash balance of $280,604, with revenues collected of $924,818.27, with transfers of $2411,554.87, with expenditures of $3,615,920.18, leaving us with the balance of... us with a balance of $1,056.96. And the rest of it is your special revenue funds. And I stand for any questions?
Lynda, have we, are we on, for the lack of better word, shutdown mode? Are we, we, we stopped pretty much all expenditures?
For the fiscal year?
For the fiscal year? And other than emergency or, or whatever bills we have?
Well, it's closed. We're done. So we're on a completely new fiscal year already, so.
Oh, that's right. God.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry.
No, but it's a good question because the report recap is for FY 2122.
Correct. So it's a fourth quarter financial report.
So your question is right. But all these numbers you don't expect to change.
No. This is it. This is the final. So actually, further down on the agenda, there's a resolution to approve this final report that needs to be submitted before we even continue with our final budget for fiscal year 23. So these numbers won't change. This is it.
Mr. Chair? Yes, sir.
I think Commissioner Edwards and I need some clarification. And I suspect that, it's going on in my head, is that this format isn't, isn't the budget comparison format that I guess I'm more used to looking at. It indicates a closing balance in the general operating fund of $16.4 million.
Correct. That's because it includes the investments.
And that's exactly what I was just suggesting. It's because of that 10.8 million in investments. So if we net that out, we're at 3.8? No, 5, sorry, 5.8.
Yeah.
My bad now.
And that's what we will begin our balance to move forward.
So the 5.8 is the key, is what we should be thinking of as carryover?
Correct.
Not 16.4?
Correct.
Very good. Now, even 5.8 sounds better than what's in my head that we've been anticipating. Is that right?
That is correct. And that's because we collected about 15% above our budgeted revenue.
Does this include, did that come in in the end of June?
Yes, sir, it did.
Okay. I'm going to take that as very good news.
Oh, yes.
Even better than the optimistic things I'd been saying in our budgeting sessions.
Correct. Because actually, if you look at the detailed report, that's like further on down, you can see that our grocery receipts tax were actually a collection rate of 141%. That was for hold harmless. And the GRT was 146% total. And this is going to have a lot of factor to do with the internet sales.
Are you able to quantify how much of that is from the new internet sales tax?
No, I don't. I have to get that information from them.
Okay. So.
Because that goes to the state, right? All the internet sales tax goes to the state and then it is distributed to us.
Distributed through, I believe it's a zip code, right?
Yeah, there is a code that they use for, a location code is what it's called.
And it's only some of it that's distributed, right?
Correct. Because the state will give a portion.
It's like a 5% tax and we get one, there's like 1% or 1.5% that gets distributed?
Yes. I believe that's what it is.
See, the biggest, or the biggest question that, that we've had on that is that, you know, I don't live in city limits, or people that don't live in city limits say they have, they use 88061 for the post office or something. The town of Silver City is the one that make you not like a bandit. Or say, for example, I have my P.O. box in Baird, so I use 88023. What does that leave the county? You know, and, and that's, and I think those are the things that we, as elected officials, need to start talking to our, our, our representatives and senators is, you know, where does Grant County fit in this? Because if, if I order something today and I want it to go to Baird, I mop, I have to use 88023. So it goes there. There's some packages, because I'm not at home, I, I send them to another, you know, Eagle Mail. So we're, you know, and those are the little things that, I know in New Mexico counties we've discussed that a lot, so. Think it leaves some of us out here, you know, Hurley, maybe, you know, Cliff, whatever. But it's a little tricky when we get into that piece.
It is. Well, and the other thing that I think we should be talking about is, I think, you know, it's potentially much higher than we anticipated, which also tells us at some level how much leakage there is. So how much of what people are buying on the internet, you know, if we're going to collect tax on that, if we collect it in Grant County versus what the state, the PIT, the state is giving us from the internet sales, there's a big difference there as well. And so I think we just need to think about how much leakage out of the county altogether that that represents.
You know, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board, when you look at those types of sales as well, if you look at our volunteer fire departments, which do a whole lot of online purchases, right, and they come to 88062. And so you're, you're looking at, I mean, you can, you can talk to Kevin about how much, you know, packages we're getting, you know, on a daily basis from our volunteer fire department. So just, just another information.
You know, sometimes I wonder on something like this, if you put all the, you know, like, and I'm not talking Southwest region, but I'm talking more Grant County, if you develop a pot of money and put all the different zip codes that are used here, and then, you know, it's distributed fairly, because right now, that's not happening. I know Arenas Valley has a different zip code, which I can't tell you what it is. I don't use it. But, you know, and then if you look at, and I'm not saying it was, but during the pandemic, or when it was really high, how many people use the internet? To, and how many continue to stay with that?
Well, see, that's, then it's, it becomes a habit, which goes back to the leakage system.
Right.
Yep.
Exactly. You're exactly right. We might be making some phone calls in, up north and seeing what we can do about that.
Right. We might need to really think about how we could ask for that to be changed.
Any other questions for Lynda?
Thank you, Lynda.
Okay, consideration of moving on. Moving on, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, the expenditure report, July 7, 2020.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, in your package you have the expenditure report that covers the period from June 17 through July 7. The total amount of expenditures in this period is, was $3,257,299.37, with this being AP checks of $2,768,681.11 and payroll of $488,618.36. And this includes pay period 12 and 13. And on the back is, included in your packet is the expenditure listing for those expenses at $10,000 and above. And I stand for any questions?
Quick one?
Yes.
About the engineering services on Bandonee to Bahan and Houston, $140,000 almost. Was that, was that because the original plan had to be abandoned due to a property owner who didn't go along?
Are you talking about the engineering services for Bandonee Drive?
That's correct.
Yeah, that was a factor of it, but the project, the project took longer than expected. We, we did have two extensions on it from DOT that took it through June 30th. The engineers didn't anticipate that long over project, and there was some issues with the, the contract as well, trying to settle some, some file pay applications and things of that nature. So their, their, their services increased.
Okay.
And all of that was covered by DOT funding.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Edwards?
Is the EMS gurney and adapters check, is that for the new gurney, gurney for the detention center?
Yeah, I want to see. Which checker?
It's at the bottom, Stryker Sales Corporation, third from the bottom.
It's for the hospital. It's for the EMS departments.
Why are we buying the gurney?
Is it coming through us?
Yes, we're the fiscal agents for all the EMS departments, for all of Grant County, including Hill Regional.
That's how we were able to do the ambulance stuff too, through here and all that.
Well, so then I'm going to just ask this question because I don't remember seeing it go by. Have we gotten the new gurney at center for the detention center?
No, not yet. Do you want to speak on behalf of that?
Good memory.
I couldn't have the issue.
I remember a month worth of it.
Yeah, right?
We did receive that gurney.
Oh, you did?
Yes, we did receive that gurney. We're waiting for the life pack because of parts and shipping and stuff like that, but we did receive the gurney.
We're getting there slowly, is what you're saying?
Yes, Commissioner.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Moving on to Roman number 10, agreements, consideration of agreement A2219, State of Mexico Department of Finance and Administration, Local Government Division, Enhance 911 Act Grant Program, the Sir Annual Grant that they come through every year.
Randy, you might need to either be closer to your mic or turn it up a little bit.
Wait, I, I talk loud, so I'm sorry. It must be, I don't know, it seemed like everybody was talking a little bit low today for some reason, so. I don't know. So that, that's on the agenda. Other agreements, consider agreement A2227, agreement with Consuelo Paul in the amount of $63,389.40 as authorized under the New Mexico Behavior of Health Services Division RISE Grant Program, FY 2023. I, is another agreement, consideration, agreement A2221, sub grant agreement with Chris DiOzello in the amount of $49,275.20 as authorized under the Behavior of Health Services Division, FY 23 RISE Grant Agreement. These, these are also our agreements, am I correct?
Yes, these, these two for Consuelo Paul and Chris DiOzello. Consuelo Paul will be acting as the treatment and discharge planner to the RISE Grant for fiscal year 2023, working with detention center staff. And Chris DiOzello will be working as the navigator and the peer support specialist. So this is, this is just a continuation of their services under a new, under a new grant agreement.
Commissioner Edwards?
So one of the things that we have had a challenge with in the past on these kind of sub awards is the reporting that actually, you know, holds the contractors accountable. So what's the plan for reporting on these two contracts? I don't see much in the agreement on that. So. There's a scope of work, but there's no, like, what's the, what's the actual plan that they're going to justify our expenditure on this?
So part of, part of this process and the way that it's been working is each, each month for their services, they do give an itemized invoice. And that itemized invoice outlines their, their work that they performed for the month, which is, which is filtered through the detention center administrator. He's, he's reviews it and he also signs off on those invoices that services have been rendered. In addition to that invoice process, there is an extensive amount of reporting that RISE requires, which is the Behavior of Health and Services Division. They require a, a lot of statistical information on their clients and what their treatments are, what their course of action is for that, for that specific client throughout the entire program. So there's some extensive reporting that goes along with it. And that's all, that's all captured, one through the invoice and two through separate reporting processes that are, that are done through the actual contract.
Okay. And that's new, the early RISE grant stuff, we weren't doing that much reporting, right?
That's correct. You know, if you recall, the, the RISE program now, I think we're, I believe we're year three on it. So that's, that evolved as well as the years progress. PHSD is, is starting to learn more requirements that they, that they want and all of the information that they want us to capture for it that's beneficial for the entire program, for this pilot program, if you will, before they, I think the intent is to, to push it to the legislature for actual funding for it. So they're trying to, it's, it's an, it's an evolving process.
Well, I'm glad to hear there's more accountability on, on that expenditure. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Edwards. Good question. Anything else on that, Commissioners? Thank you, Randy, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Resolutions, consideration of resolution R2234, resolution in order approving request of Sunzia Transit LLC to use the certain roads in Grant County under its, Mr. Hernandez?
Commissioners, in your package, this is a resolution. If you recall, the county did a, signed an agreement with the Sunzia Transmission Line to, to put the transmission line in Grant County. As part of that transmission line, they've requested that they have access to certain county roads. The two roads in particular are Cipar Road and Gage Road that, that will have access to the line. At this point, Sunzia is asking for, for usage from the, from I-10 up to the transmission line on Cipar Road, Cipar Road, and then from the split at Cipar to the county line, which, which abuts, I believe it's Luna County, for use of the road as they begin to construct, construct the line. This resolution allows, allows them to expand the road as needed within, within actual rights of way. They will maintain it to the county standards, and there will be oversight by the road department to make sure that they are in line with, with the county standards for roads. And I do have John Stram here from the Sunzia. If, if you want to elaborate on it a little bit more, if you have any more technical questions on it.
I don't really, I was confused at first because I thought anybody could use our roads, but now I realize it's not just using, it's actually making some modifications to them.
That's correct.
Is there any reason to think that after they're done, that the changed roads will be more difficult for our maintenance department to maintain?
To our knowledge, no. Joe Kavas been in some conversations with it and he's on board, he's on board with it, and if anything, it might enhance it.
Right. That's what I would assume.
Hoppy.
Yeah. Sounds good, thank you.
Anything else, Commissioners? Thank you, Mr. Villa.
Thanks for being here, Mr. Stram.
Thank you.
Letter N, consideration of resolution R2235, a resolution supporting the continued efforts of the construction operation of Sunzia Southwest Transit Project. Mr. Hernandez?
This is a continued resolution support. We've done it, I believe we, we did one last year. At this point, Sunzia has asked us to submit another one in support of their efforts. They did request an amendment to the BLM for, for their modifications to, to the, to the line. And at this point, it's a, it's a resolution where the county continues to support for it.
Has Mr. Stram got anything he wants to say to us?
Would you like to?
Mr. Stram?
After all these things, I'm like.
Yeah, right?
Yes, Commissioners and Managers.
Mike's.
Your mic on? It's a white button.
There you go. Is that better?
There you go, sir. Thank you.
Yes. Commissioners, Manager, thank you for this opportunity. Basically, why we're asking for another resolution is, is, as you probably know, the BLM has been holding virtual public input meetings and, and they did release a draft EIS at the end of April, and, and they're taking public comment through the 1st of August. And so, so at this time, we, we have altered some of the, some of the, up at the northern end, we're completely out of the northern colup area, which the military had a con-concern, although we did have a preferred alternative that we still could build today. But, but this new route will take us completely out of the northern colup area, has, has better river crossing, and so we're getting along better with the fish and wildlife. And so the main adjustments to this draft environmental impact statement has to do with, with the northern end. There's been a couple of changes made in the southern area here, but it, it was had request to the landowners. Some of them wanted it on their property, some of them wa-wanted it off their property. And so we, we were able to do exactly what was asked of the property owners. So we're actually in good shape in, in southwestern New Mexico. And so if everything goes right, we're hoping to get a final record of decision, probably in April of next year. By this time next year, we hope to be in construction. And then line one could hopefully be in commercial operation by 2025. That's a, a year and a half of construction period. So, so basically, we're just asking that, that. So, so basically, we're just asking that, that should again give us the support that you've given us in, in the past, which is, is very much appreciated. We don't take any of that for granted. Uh, and, and, and just to talk about the roads a little bit, uh, yes, we will work, uh, hand in hand with the road department. Anything that, uh, um, needs to be returned back the way it wa- way it was? If, if we widen a road, if you want it back, uh, narrowed, uh, that'll happen at the end of the, end of the period. Because if we have to widen the road out to forty feet, I know that, uh, uh, we heard a motor grader operator that did a good job, but that motor grader, operator probably won't appreciate having to maintain forty feet of road. So, anything that we can do to, uh, make it a better road, um, for the, for the county and, and for our construction crew, we'll be willing to do it, and it's completely at Sunzia's cost. So, uh, with, with that, I'd be glad to a- answer any questions.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Is the path through Grant County identical to what it was before? I think there were twenty miles or something like that?
It's, it, it's twenty miles, yes. It, uh, uh, takes in the Panhandle, uh, that runs through that, uh, CPAR area and, and on down to Hachita. And so, uh, basically, that, that's where the, where the entire line will be constructed, through that twenty-mile Panhandle area.
And my recollection is that it was in Hidalgo County that you had some property owners who wanted it moved off. No, no, nothing's changed in Grant County?
Nothing has changed in Grant County, yes, and, and, and I think you, uh, probably well aware that, uh, there's, there's some activity going on down there right now, trying to, uh, uh, put in more renewable energy. And so, so we're hoping, uh, one of these lines can, uh, sometime be a benefit, uh, to that as well.
Oh, is that right? I wasn't aware that that was a possibility based on their location on a different line.
Yes, uh, uh, you know, there was a different line, uh, proposed several years ago, and I think some, some ownership, ownership of, uh, the power lines kind of put that on the back burner. Um, and, and I just want to make this statement that Sunzia is not in competition with any other, other power line, as far as I'm concerned. Uh, being a native of southwestern New Mexico, I know we have a very poor electrical infra- infrastructure in the area. And, and so, we, we certainly welcome, uh, new transmission lines in the area. We have a big power generator near Demi, New Mexico, that's five hundred and seventy megawatts, uh, with inadequate transmission to really utilize that, uh, power plant like we can. So, the more transmission lines we can get in this area, I think the better off we'll be. And, and also, we're hoping that the northern New Mexico doesn't get hit with some power outages because of some of the shutdown. But, uh, like I said, the more infrastructure we get in New Mexico, the better off we'll all be.
And one more question about the big picture. Feel like I saw an article recently that, uh, whereas we had been thinking this was for a one gigawatt installation of, of wind power, uh, that now they're looking at three gigawatts to be transported across the Sunzia line. Is that, is that right?
Well, it's not quite a, uh, three to one. It, uh, it is, uh, by, by taking the first line and making it a DC line, uh, you're able to double the capacity on it. And, and then I th- I think that they're able to squeeze a little bit more out of the second line. And also, if, if we can get the, uh, first line, first line underway, then, then the second line planning will hopefully follow right after. The reason that there's been such a push on the first line is, is, uh, Pattern Energy's, uh, um, goal to, uh, build, build out with their wind energy in, in north central New, New Mexico.
Yeah.
So that's, that's a priority since they had a hundred percent of that line. The, the second line, we're not sure really who the customers are, that's still open right now. And, uh, but the two, two lines together will, uh, provide a little over five thousand megawatts, where as the original plan was right at three thousand megawatts.
Okay.
So, so there is a co- in, increased capacity there.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stram.
Thank you, sir.
Anything else?
Thank you, appreciate it.
I appreciate you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, moving on, there are, oh, consideration of resolution R twenty-two dash thirty-six budget adjustment request amended FY twenty-two approved budget, Linda.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, um, this resolution that you have in your pocket is the, uh, final budget adjustment to fiscal year twenty-two. Um, in this, um, I'm requesting approval to transfer out, um, six thousand five hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars into the, um, Farm and Range Fund. Um, this is to, um, cover the, to supplement the, the, um, deficit in revenue that was received for this fund. Um, the next one is a transfer out of twenty-two thousand eight hundred and thirty-four dollars from the general fund into the debt loan service. And this was for a, um, a budgeted payment for debt service on the motor graders of the road department. And then the next ones are some temporary cash transfers from the general fund into, um, the state legislative appropriation projects. The first one being eight thousand dollars for the CAP, um, trials grant. Um, the next one is sixteen thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars for the veterans memorial, uh, construction and design for the junior bill. The next one is sixteen thousand two hundred and two dollars from the general fund into, um, the fairgrounds, um, equipment legislative appropriation grant for, uh, the bleachers that were purchased. And the next one is sixty-one thousand eight hundred and thirty-six dollars. And this is also for the, um, legislative appropriation grant for the Gila Community Center. And these ones, um, total a hundred and twenty-five thousand one hundred and ninety-one dollars. And this is a temporary cash transfer until we receive the reimbursement from the state for these grants. Um, then I'm going to, uh, move on into the, um, intergovernmental grants, um, requesting to increase, um, expenses and revenues by seventy thousand seven hundred and six dollars. And this is for a Corona emergency supplemental funding grant that was awarded to the Sheriff's Office. And what they did with these funds was purchase, um, some, uh, laptops to have in their, um, mobile units. Um, I want to increase, um, the revenues and expenditures in the amount of a hundred and twenty-six thousand two hundred and thirty dollars. And this is for the Baton Park ADA Compliance, um, CDVG grant. And, um, I covered the transfers into the legislative appropriation grants. The next one is for the wastewater and sewer, um, uh, sewage system, increasing expenses by ten thousand nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars. And, um, the cash is available, um, in their cash on hand. And the next one, um, I covered already the debt service loan, which was that, um, transfer. The next one would be the, um, airport fund, um, increasing it by thirteen thousand four hundred and seventy-four dollars, and this is for engineering expenses. Um, and that is also available in their cash on hand. Any questions?
I have one, thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, Linda. The, uh, transfer to the Farm and Range Fund.
Yes.
Of six thousand five hundred and eighty-four, you said is to cover the deficit, what, what is the cause of the deficit?
Well, so, um, as you're aware, we have a twenty-five thousand dollar agreement that is, um, agreement that was signed to pay AFIS twenty-five thousand dollars. And five thousand dollars is committed for the Grant Soil and Water Conservation. So that's, um, thirty thousand dollars, and we didn't receive the thirty thousand dollars from the Taylor Grazing Act Fund. And so in order to be able to cover those two, um, agreements, we have to supplement it by the six thousand five hundred and eighty-four dollars.
Do you remind me what the five thousand one is?
That is for the Grant Soil and Water Conservation District.
Okay. I feel like, in my earlier days as a Commissioner, uh, we asked the county manager about the, uh, income from the Taylor Grazing Act, uh, fees and how that related to the contract, and that we were assured that our costs for that contract, for the Wildlife Services work, were, were fully covered by these fees. Uh, I, I hear you saying that that's, that's not the case.
That is correct.
Uh, perhaps it was at one time, and that's why she told us that?
Um, it could have been, because at one time we were receiving enough funds. Um, the last couple of years, I'm going to say we've received about eighteen thousand dollars, but we would still have the contract of twenty-five plus that five thousand. So we've been having to, uh, supplement, um, the fund to cover for those agreements. Uh, my recommendation would be that if, um, the Commission does sign an agreement with AFIS in the future, is that we, um, can indicate somewhere in that agreement that we will give them whatever is received. Um, and also that we do not disperse those funds to them until we receive them. Cause at one point we used to receive them like in January, then it became March, and now we're not receiving those funds until May. And so that kind of causes, um, it offsets my quarterly reporting to DFA, because then we have to do temporary cash transfers at all times. So that's my recommendation, if in the future there is an agreement signed with AFIS, if that's what the Commission choose to do.
No, I appreciate both of those recommendations, and, uh, I realize it's, uh, as much my responsibilities as anybody's for not having known that we ran that deficit for several years. But it did come as a surprise to, to see that, so, uh, thank you for letting us know about that.
You're welcome, thank you. Any other questions?
No, thank you, Linda.
Thank you.
All, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, all that's left is the Commission reports.
Oh, we have Pete.
Oh, I'm sorry, Pete. Consideration of resolution R twenty-two thirty-seven, final quarter financial report ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two.
And, um, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this is the, uh, resolution that, um, indicates that you accept the financial report for the fourth quarter as presented earlier. And again, this is something that we need to, um, submit to DFA in order to begin the process for our, um, budget for fiscal year twenty-three, our final budget. And, um, I'd also like to mention, back to the, um, budget adjustment resolution, all those adjustments are incorporated into that quarterly report.
Thank you. Any questions on that?
Thank you.
Thank you, Linda.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. So we'll have about a thirty-minute meeting on Thursday, right?
It sounds like.
Yeah, so just, just sit down, boy, I, I, I will not be here for that meeting on Thursday. Linda will sit in for me.
Thank you, Linda. Looks like you're thrilled. Just so you know, Mr. Chair will be here. Just remove the pillows, that's all. Moving on to the next one, the agenda is going to be, uh, wow, going to be Commissioner Reports, and I'm going to go with Mr. Brown. Looks like you have something there that you might want to discuss a little bit with.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, a couple of items. Uh, one is a, a continuation of, of the discussion we were just having about the Wildlife Services contract. In addition to the surprise, at least to me, and my guess is it's a surprise to my fellow Commissioners, that, uh, county general operating funds have been subsidizing this contract. There's the fact that, uh, on a statewide basis anyway, and I want to emphasize that this is nothing specific to Grant County. The agency that we're, we're talking about, AFIS, Animal Control folks, you know, called Wildlife Services, uh, they've been criticized by our Senator, Senator Martin Heinrich, for what he described as serious accountability issues and a lack of scientific integrity. Uh, for a federal Senator to say this about a, a federal agency, I thought, I think it's quite remarkable. And it comes after a report, uh, from a former head of AFIS in New Mexico. This gentleman, for a year and a half, was in charge of AFIS, which is in charge of Wildlife Services, and, uh, he essentially became a whistleblower. Uh, he asserts that the, uh, reports submitted by some of the agency's staff members, uh, essentially were lying about the, uh, depredation, the kills by, suppose allegedly by Mexican wolves of cattle. This whole thing is really focused on the Mexican wolf recovery program, not the issues that we've talked about here. But to me, it goes to the integrity of the agency that we're looking at. And, uh, we have ourselves focused on the question of accountability, uh, which I think is a totally appropriate place for us to focus. Uh, so it, it struck me that this isn't just a problem in Grant County, this seems to be a statewide problem. Uh, the gentleman, the former director of AFIS, high, high-level position, after he documented some of the problems related to his own staffers, uh, apparently lying about, uh, some of the cattle kills, uh, he was, uh, demoted and transferred. He sued the government, he won, he got his position back, his rank, he's got his record restored. But he was shipped off to Guam, which is one very effective way of shutting somebody up. So, that's where he is now. I should note that, uh, the problems he encountered came during, uh, the administration of Susan Martinez. So it's been a while, it takes a while for these things to come out. Uh, and it's possible that the problems have been cured. I have no information, no follow-up, information about that. But we do have the letter from the federal Senator, uh, noting these problems have continued. So, I, I continue to be skeptical about, uh, a renewing contract, uh, with Wildlife Services, and this just added, added fuel to my concerns. The second item that I wanted to talk about, uh, is one that I expect our Chair will be able to, to speak to also, and that's a question of homelessness in the county, not just the city. Uh, Pat Kano, uh, mother of the city, town counselor, but also someone I know because of her work in the Spanish Department at Western. Uh, she submitted what I thought was a very constructive column, uh, describing both the problems to the neighbors of the spin facility on Brewer Hill and the sympathy that she and many others have to the fact that we have to fix this problem of homelessness, we can't just not do anything. I've had a, a meeting with some downtown business owners, it happened just before I went on vacation. Uh, they've got concerns not related to the spin facility, but related to homelessness in the downtown area, especially in the big ditch. Uh, I mentioned to them that I was aware of this, of this other issue, that people are suggesting, uh, the county take the lead in forming a task force. They, these downtown business owners were, were very enthusiastic about participating in, uh, such a task force. It's my sense that, uh, we need to look at this on a county basis, that we can't just expect the town, uh, to do everything, that if one of the solutions is to locate, uh, facility for homeless folks uh, away from residential areas, so that, uh, as Ms. Kano puts it, Dr. Kano puts it, uh, folks with houses aren't paying the price to help folks without houses, I thought was a good way to put it. Uh, that we need county involvement, because we're talking about locating this in the county. And if providing transportation for the folks using that facility, so that they can access grocery stores and other services in town, if that's part of the solution, then again, the county needs to be at the table. Uh, so for, for both these reasons, uh, I'm, I would like to encourage us to, to look at participating in such a task force. I believe the Chair has been, has been talking with her and, and, and others about this, and I look forward to hearing what, what ideas he's come up with. Uh, I'm very interested in making this happen and, and helping out anyway, thank you.
Do you want me to answer that now, or?
You're the Chair, you can decide how to structure the come on.
I don't want to interrupt you, but you said.
Yeah, no, I can wait till it's your turn.
Okay.
That was fun.
Yeah, that's fine, keep going.
No, that's it for me, thank you.
That's it for you.
Yep. Oh, you know what, I, I forgot, especially since not everybody knew who sent the mysterious message about somebody losing their phone, that was I. Uh, I lost my Commission phone. If you didn't get my message, or you didn't know who the heck it came from, uh, it came from me. That was I. Uh I lost my commission phone. If you didn't get my message or you didn't know who the heck it came from, uh it came from me. And uh I'm gonna see if I can just have the that number, you know, forward to my personal phone. I don't lose my personal phone. For some reason, I've lost my county phone a couple of times. So it strikes me that the best solution, in my case anyway, will be to use my personal phone. I'll let you know if that if that works out. All right, now I think I'm done.
I apologize to you, Commissioner Billings.
I thought it was your text message. You weren't the only one. I'm a little surprised at what, I haven't lost it yet.
Commissioner Billings, do you have a report?
Yeah, so um just real quickly, um I just wanna say thank you, uh Mr. Alvezola, to you and your staff for uh the report you gave and the work that you're doing out at the detention center. It's good to hear that you're fully staffed and working on a five-year plan, updating policies, getting ready for accreditation. Just wanna thank you. That's a good good report and good news and thanks for the work. It it doesn't go unnoticed. I certainly can't appreciate all that you deal with out there, but uh we I do appreciate it. Congratulations again to Ted. Thirty years is a long time. He mentioned during his uh very short speech, customers. And I I don't, I'm I'm glad that um that we have people in the county who look at um the their constituents, our constituents as customers. Because that I that's the way I look at it, is that they're people that people to serve, people to help uh solve problems and get things done. Uh congratulations again to Ted. Mister McMaster uh came and presented his program today. I hope um that we can find something to do to alleviate his concerns. I know we've taken on two ordinances recently to help clean up the county. I don't know how much we can do, but I'm I I mentioned this in a previous comment, uh getting with legal and seeing what we can do to clean up some of the mess around and get people to be responsible for their, the messes that they're that they're making in in the community. Lower lowers property values and um and just invites more mess when you when you go down that road. I did mention, thank you for uh your question, uh Mr. Chair, that there were forty people at the ICIP meeting in Cliff. And um glad to see that they're working so hard to uh get their community center needs taken care of. It was me who asked a question some time ago if they couldn't just use, since that facility was so old and outdated and possibly dangerous, if they couldn't just use the the exhibit hall over at Cliff. And I think the answer to that is, to my question is, no, they can't. And so it's very loud and clear. Um it it was just a question and I think we got the answer. I appreciate them working so hard towards that. They've they've really stepped up and they presented to us a history of the uses of the building and they have written, no wonder that building's worn out. They have really used the heck out of it, so. Uh also, I actually at that meeting, I recognized Mister Solis that you might be bringing up the need for such a building in in the members area and that there is, uh you know, it's not the only need in the county, that there's com- competing interests, so. Got a number five here somewhere. Oh, yeah, if I could just uh comment on the homelessness issue briefly. You know, this is the the spin house has or houses have created quite a controversy with um, is her name Kano too?
Elupe.
No, her mom.
Her mom is also, well, here it's not Alice Kano.
Patricia, okay.
Patricia Kano.
Right. And quite a few others have come forward and and talked about the problem and um that's been created. And I I guess my biggest concern is that what happened in Portland, Oregon, and my what I'm more familiar with is Salt Lake City, whereas it's a classic case of if you build it, they will actually come. So I'm not saying we're gonna, and I've been told by people that that won't happen here, but I've seen it happen and I don't see why it won't. Uh in the case of Salt Lake City, they began accommodating people and pretty soon they were getting actually busloads of people coming in to take advantage of those accommodations from other places. And I'm I'm just afraid that we won't be just serving the homeless population here. If it's true, what I was told, that this is the only twenty-four-seven uh hap- facility in the state that we'll be getting, and I I think that's what uh that's what I heard. I don't know if that's true or not. I thought that was an in kind of an incredible claim too, but um anyhow, if we if we if we build it, I'm I'm, my fear is that we'll be serving more than just our local population. And I I don't know what the answers are. I know a man who some might consider homeless, and he makes it very clear that he's not homeless. He has a nice home, his and he's shown it to me, his tent and uh facility takes pretty good care of it. We have quite a thing going on. He works for me from, with me and for me from time to time. But I do, I that was all joking aside, it's um it is a problem. I don't know what what the answers are other than uh I hope that we don't make it worse. Wildlife Services, I know this is quite a um become quite a controversy again. I was aware of the sixty-eight, six thousand five hundred and eighty-four dollars just because uh Chairman Ponse asked me to check with Linda. And so I did last week and sounded like it was gonna be more and then she ran the figures and that's what it came up with, so. The only reason I'm not surprised is because I got that number from her last week. And yes, I was uh under the impression that we had fixed the contract some time ago to where we wouldn't be subsidizing that. Uh that being said, uh we have gotten quite a few letters um. And it just, I I'm not sure, most of them are not well thought out. They're just the same repeated first line, line after line after line. But some on both sides are well thought out. Uh the lady who had the bee bee farm in Red Rock was, hers was, I don't know if you all got that, but very informative about the problems that she went through and how Wildlife Services addressed. Uh I'll forward those to you. Addressed that uh with um non-lethal methods at first and and she saw no solution, but the final solution was lethal mess uh uh method taking on a bear. Also comes to my mind, the pigeon problem that where pigeons are apt to build uh their nests around swamp coolers because of the moisture. And then the swamp, they have diseases, uh I'm told, that suck that into people's houses. Wildlife Services has mitigated some of those problems. There's the woodpeckers, uh squirrels, skunks who can are rabid and they've done some of that work. It's not just uh livestock depredation. Also, um probably the most serious problem that I've seen them deal with is when you have a bad-acting mountain lion and there were scares in both school districts uh in the last, maybe it's been two years ago now, where um children were weren't even being allowed to go out on the playground because of the scare of the mountain lion. In fact, there was a a threat made on the superintendent's life. It got so heated up and restraining orders placed, but not apparent, but it became quite an issue and and you would think that game and fish could deal with stuff like this, but they actually called Wildlife Services to deal with that. Uh when the uh lion killed a man in Pino Saltos some years ago, uh it was Wildlife Services, Brandon Jones, um who went and found that exact lion through the tracks and got the got the right lion. So oftentimes, um they have provided uh a necessary service for the county. I don't know what. Thank you for the um background information you gave on that because I was wondering what those letters were referencing, so. I think that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Billings. Um Commissioner Edwards.
So uh first thing I wanna talk about very briefly is um I had actually um been aware of some of the things that Mister McMaster was talking about. They had been brought to me by another resident on uh Cotton Road and um uh that was this. So they're also, in addition to the trash houses and that sort of things, are having a challenge with squatting. And uh so I asked the sheriff, uh what would happen if uh somebody called the sheriff's office and reported a squatter in a in a house? And um they uh the they have to be able to prove that the um person does not have permission to be in the house and the way they do that is call the property owner and um determine whether the people in the house have permission to be in there. If they do not, uh without further paperwork or anything like that, uh the sheriff's department can go out to the house and evict um the persons in the house. And so I just want um the public to know that that is um the answer to that question, what to do about a potential squatter. Uh I think I would discourage the public from calling the sheriff every time they uh have somebody in a house that they don't think belongs there because uh you can't judge that. Um but if you have reason to believe that it is a squatter, maybe um uh you might wanna contact the property owner yourself. I also wanted to acknowledge um and I appreciate Mister Billings bringing this up. Thirty years is a really long time. We really appreciate um the uh Ted and everyone else who has spent that much of their life uh serving Grant County. And I think the particular thing that struck me also was that uh this is a thirty-year employee that thought of county residents as customers of the county. And um I appreciate that attitude and I hope that all of us, um from commissioners on down, uh always think of the people that we serve in this community as our customers and uh strive to serve them uh with the highest standards of customer service, which I know Ted uh definitely did. And my notes are all over the place, so my comments are all over the place. So I just wanted to mention really quick, if anybody's paying attention to this, uh we um have said a couple of times, two or three times over the last month or so, that the joint commission survey was starting today at Healer Regional Medical Center. And at seven-thirty this morning, they canceled that survey. So the joint commission survey is not happening at GRMC. I uh I also received um uh I read uh Patricia Kano's letter in um in the Daily Press, but I also received um a letter, as I think all of us did, and the thing that the letter and the email came uh with, in addition to her extremely well-thought-out letter, she had a a whole plan um attached on how to deal with homelessness. And um I responded to her individually, but I'll share some of my thoughts with that as well. We do, you know, there's a lot of infrastructure that we can uh build with grants and capital outlay and that sort of thing. And I have no doubt that uh her plan is a good plan and probably quite likely to be the plan that we should be uh following at least to some extent. And um I do agree with Mister Billings. I think we would have to talk about how not to have services for people outside of Grant County somehow. Don't know what that would look like. But but staffing her plan would be a monumental undertaking. And um one of the things that I see often that I find very frustrating is the fact that we we can always find a way to um uh to do capital projects, what we don't have a plan for. And when I say the we, I mean the big we, uh the state, uh counties, municipalities. What we don't have is the revenue that would support actually um the programming and the people that it takes to run those um buildings, that capital investment. And so um as we go forward and talk about the homelessness issue, I think we need to keep in mind that any solution is going to involve a a great deal of long-term investment in the people that it would take to staff uh any anything we um might want to do in the future. And one of those staffing things, I think, um is something that uh I'm going to be driving a conversation on and until we actually either do it or say we're not gonna do it. And that is um uh fully funding a Health and Human Services Department. I feel very strongly that we need a Department of the County um that is Health and Human Services and that we need to fund that because uh things like the task force need, uh I think, facilitation and a home and a place to belong. And um I have been talking uh also with um with our Health and Human Services Coordinator about um the homelessness issue. It's clear that it's um a big problem, but it's also connected to all the other challenges that we're facing in this community around behavioral health, mental health, substance abuse, quality of housing, availability of housing. We don't have um high-quality, low-income housing. There are many, 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 many gaps in our community that are creating the homelessness problem. And uh while I'm in agreement um that a task force might be the answer around this issue, what we also have to have is some way to coordinate all of these services. And in my opinion, a Health and Human Services Department at the county uh is the way for us to do that. Finally, I just I wanna make some comments about the Wildlife Services um topic. It is, uh as has been mentioned, a very controversial. And um I think it's it's more complicated um than we uh might be thinking about it as. And I wanna recognize that there is a lot of passion on both sides of this issue. People feel very, it's an issue that people feel very, very strongly about. But some things have come up for me um in the last couple of weeks that um sort of culminate in in one question. And uh the things that I'm referring to is, one of the things that the, so we've gotten tons of letters uh from people um asking us to rethink uh the Wildlife Services contract. And one of the things that comes up in those letters um over and over and over again is climate change. And um while the focus on climate change uh in these letters has really been about you know, our wildlife is uh dealing with enough due to climate change. What we're not thinking about is what the impact of climate change uh and wildlife are going to have on um other areas of the county. And um uh the fires are part of that, uh the drought is part of that. I know that I cannot possibly be the only person in Silver City that is really struggling with deer right now. Part of the reason why we're having a a tremendous deer problem uh i- in our communities right now is because the deer um are thirsty, uh it's because people feed them, um it's because they provide water for them. What deer are going to attract is other predators who don't, who are running out of habitat because of fires and drought. And so um their natural predators are going to be coming closer to our residential areas in search of the same thing that the deer are in search of, food and water. And um climate change and other issues are also affecting some of the things that Mister Billings mentioned. Skunks, birds, pigeons. Skunks, birds, pigeons, you know, those sorts of things. As we lose habitat and as we experience more drought, higher heat, et cetera, our wildlife will be searching for relief. And that relief is in our residential areas in the form of food, water, et cetera. So all of that leads me to the question that I have. And I think this is really important. And I recognize that not everybody may think this is as important as I do, but I think we have to ask ourselves this question going forward. What is our plan if we don't have Wildlife Services providing services? Because there are many things that Wildlife Services does that are important services that I foresee are going to have to actually be expanded as we deal with the challenges that we're faced with around the movement of wildlife due to climate change. And so my, my, the purpose of my comments are not to say we should or should not do Wildlife Services. That is not what I am discussing today. My comment is, what is our plan going forward if we don't have Wildlife Services? I've looked at the mission of Wildlife Services and the mission of Fish and Game. Fish and Game is not the agency that we would be calling to provide the services that Wildlife Services won't provide if, when they're, because their contract has not been renewed. And so as we must do with many of the decisions, or really all of the decisions that we make up here, we have to somehow forecast what the future is and what the either intended or unintended consequences are of our decision-making process. And one of the things that I think we need to discuss is what would the impacts be if people decide to take it into their own hands to address these issues? We need a plan. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Edwards. Commissioner Salas.
Well, I'll get the easy one done first. I too want to congratulate Ted. I've known him for a long time as a personal friend. And the person you see there is a person I know, very kind, soft-spoken, good demeanor. And the way he acts here, that's the way he conducts himself. So I want to congratulate him, you know. He's been an exemplary employee and many of us could take, you know, a lead and try to follow his example. The other one I wanted to say is, is I too got communications about homelessness. I've talked to other people in the area, you know, for, when I was growing up, that was the Blueberry Hill area. And so there's a lot of people that I know that still live in that area. And they're now, let's put it, not the elderly, but the retired and stuff. So is there a problem? There definitely is. But I see the problem centered in Silver City. So I really think that Silver City should take the lead. Should we be a part of that? Should we be in collaboration? Yes. I was in Las Cruces yesterday to take my wife to a doctor. And because of the letter, I was looking at the problems that they have, you know. And it seems like part of their solution is to ignore it. And there's many homeless camps, you know, along many of the major streets and you see them there. And it's loaded with the problems of society that we have right now, you know, with, with mental health, with drugs and all that. So there is a grand problem there. Now, should we be part of the solution? I, I think we should. But I don't think that we should take the lead on it. I think the, the lead should be taken here with Silver City because that's where the problem exists. It's not in, in, in the tri-city, it's, it's here. And, and why? Because here's where the majority of businesses are and stuff. And I've seen some of the projects that they have attempted in other cities. And Portland was a great example of failed trying to find a solution, you know. Albuquerque has been trying the tiny house villages and stuff. So I have not seen anything that works well. So a collaboration and putting some well thought into that is, should be done. Whether we center that here in the county, you know, but I, I think it, it, it needs a leader. It needs, since we all use the services and the stores, the restaurants that are here in Silver City, I think we should all try to find a solution to that. I have gotten a lot of emails, as we all have, on, on wildlife. And even in Bayard, you know, we've had mountain lions, we've had bears, we've had lots of javelina. Without Wildlife Services, I've seen what has happened to try to corral a mountain lion, which involves a police chasing, kind of chase and catch, shoot the, the mountain lion there in our, you know, in the south end of Bayard. And we chose to live in a community that's beautiful, next to the mountains and next to the forest. And we have infringed on those, their habitats. So I've been, you know, part of, somebody that, that has gone to address the problems of the bears coming down twin sisters, you know, in, in times when, when there is food, when there is water. But the bears, I guess their natural curiosity is let them down, you know. And who do they call? Wildlife Services to tranquilize and move the bears. But I see one of the main points of contention is between the people that want to care for the animals and not do anything and our ranching community. And ranching is an industry in our community. It provides a lot of jobs, even though it's not as visible as, say, the mine or something, it still provides a lot of jobs. So we have helped, you know, our mining community. We've, we've done a lot to encourage tourism here. So we've, we've put money into different activities that encourages tourism, that will encourage, you know, people spending their money in, in our hotels and our restaurants and, and all that. And I don't see a problem in trying to help our ranching community. I've been out there when, you know, big ranchers, they, they take care of the problems themselves. I've been there when they go out on lion hunts that are killing the, the calves and the cattle. You know, I've been there when they've been out shooting coyotes that are taking the calves. So I've seen places where people make their, their livelihood in guiding. And, you know, lions put down a lot of, a lot of elk and deer. And they've gone out and they, they hunt, hunt those predators and, and, and pretty much they kill them so that they don't infringe on their livelihood. Now, so I, I do see a problem with maybe the way they report, the way they do things. But I don't think the solution is to totally ignore the problem and throw away with Wildlife Services. Is there an improvement that we can make? Probably. But it's going to be, it's not going to be an easy solution for us to say, should we keep this contract? Should we modify it? Should we put more money into it? And I hope we can come up with it. And that's mine.
Thank you, Commissioner Salas. For me, I guess, sort of a little bit's going to be a little rant and rave here. It's going to go on, but that's fine. I, I just, you know, there's some things that I do need to point out. But the first thing is, is with Commissioner Brown, and I guess everybody has touched on, is, is on the homeless situation. So, and I did get your email. I don't think I replied to you, where you have maybe a couple of people that, that would like on that. I know that I've had conversations with Commissioner Edwards. But prior to having these conversations, I have attended with Ms. Cano, Ms. Patricia Cano meetings in, in sort of their little neighborhood that they brought up plenty of concerns. And I know that Ms. Cano had asked me to, to go ahead and try to get something put together, a task force. And, and I do apologize to her. It's taken, taken some time. And this is probably where I'm going to get on this first subject, a little bit in trouble. But I think what I did is I reached out to our Grant County Health Council to try to do something. Here we are five, six months later and haven't gotten anywhere. So basically what I think's going to end up happening is, is with the conversations I've had with, with Commissioner Edwards, I believe maybe Wednesday, we have a meeting with Cassandra Hartley. I forget her title, but.
Health and Human Services Coordinator.
I thought it was. Health and Human Services Coordinator. We're going to meet with her. And I think, and I understand what Commissioner Salas is saying, that, you know, the problem's more within the city limits. But I think we do need to take a, start taking a proactive approach, start tossing out some ideas and we'll meet. And from there, we could probably put some type of advisory board or a board together, sort of like we have with the Behavioral Health. And I know Commissioner Edwards and Cassandra have been real instrumental in that piece. Something similar to that. So the conversations have been going. But I think my direction now is more putting it on the county and going this route. And doing that so hopefully we can get some, some ideas going and, and something done on that. I know that Ms. Cano had to walk back, emailed me sort of the structure of what she would like to see that board, compromise the people, community leaders. So we are working on that. I know there's been a lot of issues. I don't know if any of our commissioners has had the time or, or would like to meet with our treasurer, Patrick Khan, because he does live in that area. He has a lot of information on stuff going on. And he can be real insightful, just like Ms. Cano and everybody that's, that's been in those meetings. So we are trying to work on something. Commissioner Brown, I did see your email. We'll work on it. We'll probably know a little bit more Wednesday after we get done with the meeting and, and see what direction we decide to hit on that. But it is in the works and I, I do hear, you know, both sides of the story. You know, I'm not too much into the, you know, and, and it's my fault. I haven't really sat down with Christine. I think there's some opportunities there to do a little better, to maybe even, and I'm not even sure. You know, I'm speaking, I guess, out of ignorance because I haven't had those meetings. You know, there, there's a big chance there for the, the Behavioral Health, how to provide services, give them literature to do that. I don't know if we have. I don't know if some of the issues that have been brought up, as far as the restrooms and the situations and the people that are there, I, I don't know. But, you know, those are questions I'm going to have to start asking down the road. So does that help you out there, Commissioner, with that piece?
Yeah, I look forward to hearing what happens on the Wednesday meeting. Keep working on this.
Yeah, we, we will and, and all that. The other thing that I told Ms. Anno to walk back is that I would go ahead during my comments, make an announcement. I think most of us have probably gotten emails and I'm sure there's flyers out there. But there's going to be a newcomers event. So it's going to be, you know, going to be Saturday, August 6th, from 2:00 to 4:00. It's a Silver City Museum Courtyard. So, you know, I hope that all these newcomers that have come into Grant County, Silver City, started living here, will attend this event. And it'd give the opportunity for a lot of people to come in and meet our new neighbors and, and new people that have come into, into Grant County Silver City. So remember, newcomers event, Saturday, August 6th, 2:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Silver City Museum Courtyard. And if you guys can remind me, we can keep, keep doing that till next, even Thursday. You know, and, and I know Wildlife Services contract's always been real controversial. You know, my biggest thing on, on this contract is by not approving this. Number one, I, I do respect the decisions that was made of, of our fellow commissioners. You know, thi- this last meeting, I was able to attend, which brings me back to, you know, what I want to thank everybody that called me, sent me text messages, whatever, as to how I was doing, doing fine. Sorry I wasn't able to show up for those two meetings. It just wasn't the best time for me. But I really appreciate all that and, and the people reaching out and, and asking how I was doing and, and, you know, their thoughts and, and, and well wishes. Thank you and I appreciate that. But going back to, to this, one of the biggest things and, and one of the biggest concerns I have by not being able to, to provide these services is the tools we take away from our communities, the, the tools we take from, from people that use these services. You know, like some of our commissioners have mentioned, you know, Commissioner Billings, Commissioner Salas, you know, Commissioner Edwards also, you know, mentioned some of the things, you know, climate change does have a lot to do with it. Now, you know, if you look at downtown, you're not going to see a coyote walking downtown area. You may see a mountain lion. I don't even know if that's even been reported. You know, people in the downtown area aren't going to be seeing that. But, you know, when this came forth and, and, you know, I was asked by two commissioners that they were surprised it wasn't put on this agenda. And you know what? You know, part of me was saying, yeah, you know what? If, if that's a wish, we can let it go and, and, you know, let's not put it on the agenda right now. So I was probably more in the eighty-five percent thinking, struggling with this because it's, it's the services. So, and, and this is probably where, where I'm, I'm, you know, what ended up happening is we started getting what I call chain letters. And I was very disappointed in how this was written. I don't care who wrote it, what it was. So that was part of the, how I was disappointed in this. This, this chain letter that went out emailing, I don't know how many of them I got. Most of them, I read the first line. I'm not going to sit there and waste half a day reading the same letter over and over with the same point. And I'm being honest with you. So, so doing that. But what got me thinking to where maybe we do need to put it back on the agenda was one of the paragraphs that, that was put in here. Mountain lions, bobcats, black bears, coyotes, how to maintain the balanced, balanced nature of the Healey National Forest in elsewhere in the county. I totally agree with that. They do. But this one line right here totally made me change my mind and put me back on Wildlife Services contract. Because I don't know why somebody would put this line in there. I don't know why somebody would, would not read through it and just send out these emails. Livestock owners should take responsibility for protecting their own property. You know, I know there's a lot of livestock owners out there that are very responsible and are using, because if you look at the reports, are giving these services to do this because they're doing the responsible thing. Now, when somebody to me puts that in an email, it's telling us, telling them, take matters into your own hands. Now, some people feel good because they don't see it, they don't hear it, and they won't see the stats on it. Because again, I have no doubt that they will take care of their own problem. What I have pushing for, been pushing for and, and talking about and saying, I don't want people to take things into their own hands because now some creatures are going to be getting killed that shouldn't get killed. You know, so reading through this email, I got it more of a, when you make a comment like that in an email, do they really care about these creatures and their life? That's what's disturbing to me. Or is it a me against them? If it's a me against them, and I'm just, just perception here, don't get me involved in a me against them. I was raised better than that. Is, I was elected to be open-minded, to listen to both sides. So again, this email totally changed my mind, not to where they wanted to change my mind, but changed my mind to know we do need accountability. We do need these services so people don't think, take things to their own hands. Now, there's a couple of things here. About a year ago, there was a law, and, and if people want to look, look at Senate Bill 32. Read it. I think this law came into effect April something, 2022. So what we do as people, what we do is, we have these laws passed. And we are satisfied with laws passing because, oh, we can't, you know, you can't kill coyotes. You can't have the coyote killing contest. But you know what? When that law passes or when that's put on there, you know, we start patting each other on the back, jumping up and joy. Whether it's a victory, we did this, we did that, and all that. that, but you know what? What happens to the accountability, to the enforcement? These bills never carry anything with the, with, with bringing in more law enforcement officers, which would be game and fish, bringing in more money to be able to do this. So, you know, while we're sitting here patting ourselves on the back, I guarantee you, the only reason we feel comfortable is because we don't see these flyers in social media anymore, because we don't see them on sporting goods store, but you know what? Saturday morning, when you sit, get up and drink your cup of coffee, you know what there is? There's still coyote hunting going out there. It's just not advertised, and I'm pretty sure there's still prize money involved, there's still certain things, but you know what? We always are satisfied when we do something. You know, I don't like, I've never been in a coyote contest. I like hunting, I like fishing. What I kill, I eat, what I don't, I share. You know, and, and it is, I agree, senseless coyote killing is not for me. Then, you put something in that, take responsibility to protecting their own property. How could I sit up here as a person, or as a commissioner, and I would never do that, so if you're going to put it in the paper, make sure you get it right? I would never do that. When people sit up here and start telling us, oh, you know, this dog got in a leg trap, this dog got hurt, this dog this, this dog that, how dumb would it be of me saying, well, keep it on a leash and keep it next to you, take responsibility for your property? Well, no, these little animals that are out in the forest deserve to be running around, deserve to be protected. So, I look at all this, and, you know, part of it is true, we don't have some teeth in these laws. You know, I can go on and on, on, on certain laws that we approve. You know, what was the biggest thing on the red flag bill? It, it, it's the things that we jump on bandwagons, just to jump on them, but once it's there, we as citizens, as elected officials, don't pursue the accountability piece, don't send emails to state or senate. We sat here, heard about the red flag, red flag law. It was passed, everybody was happy. Not everybody, people were happy about it, we accomplished something. Has anybody looked up the thousands of officers in the state of New Mexico? Albuquerque and, and state police probably make over 2,000 officers. Do you know how much, how many times that law has been used? Look it up. You'll be surprised. Last time I saw it, and I heard anything on it, it was used between seven and nine times. That tells me one of two things, it wasn't necessary to put it there, or people aren't being held accountable to use it. So, my point to this whole thing is, we have a tool out here that does not just go destroy animals, but does help our citizens in Grant County. You know, we talk about, well, shouldn't these little animals be able to be free to do that? Well, why don't we put fences around their garden? Shouldn't they be free to come in and eat what they need? Oh, no, that's how I sustain my family, that's how I feed them. Oh, no, it's different. I thought we were going to play a video with the Red Rock Bear destroying their beehives, destroying bees. I keep hearing bees, and, you know, how, how great they are for the environment, how this and that. What am I supposed to tell them as a commissioner? Take care of your own property? No. Or do as a commissioner? Do I sit up here and try to provide tools for what they needed to do? They called game and fish, three times, I believe. Game and Fish is a law enforcement agency. Game and Fish, and you know, it's surprising, like in the last year or two, I've gotten so much, so many compliments on how well our game and fish are doing in this, in, in this area in Grant County, but Game and Fish is a law enforcement agency. You see, when you take a drive out into the county, or not into the county, into the, the rural areas or in the forest, how many signs are shot up? How many people, how, how much do they poach? Those are the things that, who do they call for these services? Commissioner Billings said that. They call Wildlife Services to help them. Who do our schools call? Who do our residents call? When we had, I forget how many thousands of dollars of damages on one of our volunteer fire departments from, for, from wood pickers, who did we call? My point to, to this is, there's a tool. I'm not saying it's the perfect tool, I'm not saying it's the best tool, there's a tool that we have to help with some of this stuff, and I would like, you know, part now, well, after I read that email, I, I would like to continue those services on those, for those people, to be able to use that. And I do get passionate about this, because that's one thing I do not like, is take matters into your own hands. That, that's what creates a lot of problems, is taking matters into your own hands. I would like to look at it, because it, that email totally changed my mind. You know, and I'm a little surprised, too, that some of those people that, that were on the, named on there, that I thought we had a, a little bit of rapport, that they could call me and talk to me about some of these issues, instead of a chain letter. I know I have, have conversations, Mr. Griffin came up here, you know, we, we discussed a little bit of maybe some type of overlook committee, you know, I'd met with Mr. Fajardo. I told him, you're letting us down. You're letting us down. Our county manager was in this meeting, because I don't know how many of our commissioners have met with him or have talked to him to say to fix his report. I don't. I know I did, and you know what? I told him, you're letting us down. What's happening is they're inputting this information into system, just like we do in the county. At the end of the day, they print it, they send it off. Yes, we hate to see calves, this coyote killed, this is, I don't even know why, and I asked them, I don't even know why the 65 feral cattle that were killed were in the report. I, I don't think that was our business, I don't think it needed to be in there, but you know what? People are happy that they got killed, because, you know what, they're not destroying the forest. Well, they're still animals, and it's still alive, and, and that's not my business. But I did talk to him and ask him, you know, can this report be, be done better? And I think it went up to all of you. I don't know if it's a perfect report, the reason I had to do them to write a report with my ideas on that report is so our commissioners could have input, and so they could look at it, maybe say, Chris, you were wrong on this side, maybe it needs to be put here a little better, there, so we can come up with a solution, because I'll be the first one to, this isn't the perfect thing, it's not the worst thing, the other thing that we lose by not having Wildlife Services, but you know what? Human nature, out of sight, out of mind. We're not going to have the stats, just like we don't have the stats anymore of, of these coyote contests, just like we don't have the stats of what's going to be killed. We lost information on how to make things better. So, to a point, I was like, yeah, it's not going to go on this agenda, I'm good with it, do whatever, but this email and, and some other conversations is, we're going to lose a very valuable tool. Now, whether it goes on another agenda, we'll see, we'll go from there, but, you know, for right now, with what I've read in the last two weeks, it has totally changed my mind that I probably would like to see it on the agenda and move forward with it, because taking things into your own hands is just not the way we do business, or we shouldn't be doing business. But that's my rant, and that's how I feel. The other piece I forgot here, is I think it's, I believe it is today, during a town council meeting, I, I don't know much about it, but there should be a town council meeting. What I heard, I'm not sure what it is, maybe people can research it, read it, look at it, that they're trying to put some type of transition unit by Sixth Street School, and I think the, the superintendent is very against that because of our school kids. You know, research it, and you might be able to go to the town council meeting, provide input on that, because that is a little scary for them. And for a lot of people and our school kids, and, and I don't know the, the workings of it, if it's through the Adult Probation Office, the courts, I, I really don't know, but it'd be real interesting to get that information tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, on that last item, can I get a clarification? Randy, there's an ICIP meeting today also, right? Are they going to conflict with the...
I thought it was today, I, I may be wrong, but...
The, the town council will be in here, and I think you will be in the finding department.
So, that's over there, okay.
Yeah, and I'm going to have a finding done for it.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Mr. Chair.
So, yes, sir.
No, I was going to say, Mr. Bonzoy is here now, I don't know, I know there was some, some questions, I don't know if you want to go into a long conversation with him, we are, Linda and I are going to meet with him here after the meeting.
Maybe he can come back, well, like I said, if Thursday, he can come back.
Okay.
Okay. Commissioners, next item on the agenda is executive session in accordance with MNSA, NMSA, 1978, 10-15-1, subheading H and 2. May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Edwards, I have a second by Commissioner Brown. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Madam Clerk, may I have a roll call?
Yes, Chairman Ponce, Commissioners Edwards, Brown, Salas, and Billings, are you all aware that you will be entering executive session?
Yes.
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 Thank you. Also, just to let everyone know, there is, this is a work session, there will be no action items, so Ben, if you can hear me back there, which I think you can, you're free to go, and Mary Alice, newspaper, there is no action, so you guys are free to go. Be available, Mr. Villa, just in case, and we will let you know what time we are concluded. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you.